Okay. Um, Mr. Kearns?
Oh, we brought pictures.
Thank you. So, I run the after-school Lego Robotics Team, and it's a great experience for our middle schoolers. We do, basically, start September, meet three times a week, and have our competition, which we just had, September, November 10th or 11th on a Saturday. We did great. We came in fifth place out of seventeen teams.
Wow.
This was...
Wow.
Yeah. It's been something we've been going on and off with, and we had a lot of new students that I think did really well. I wanted to share some pictures of the team competing. In this, they have, um, in this, they have a robot that they have to program. There's a bunch of missions on the board that they have to go and, like, lift stuff up, lift stuff up, bring stuffs up to different places, and it's all about engineering, programming, all of that stuff. So, it's definitely a really good challenge for them, but I wanted to thank the Board for supporting their programs.
Oh. Yay, fifth out of seventeen?
Yeah.
How many students participate?
Uh, we have seven students this year. The team is maxed at ten.
Uh-huh.
And I would like to bring on more students. Um, I mean, it's just really tough the more students you have, because there's only one robot allowed, so we kind of all share in one robot, which is tough. So, we did seven students. It actually worked really well.
And what grades?
Uh, we had some from eighth graders. So, we have two eighth graders that are moving on, and five seventh graders, so I think next year we'll do even better.
Who'd they compete against?
It's a qualifying event, so it's the Seacoast region, and then if you, I want to say it's the first four teams move on to the state championships, and then it's the Worlds.
Wow. So, we were right there.
Right there.
Excellent. I have one more question. Is this related to the Dean Kamen, or is this another one?
Yep, it's the same thing for Dean Kamen.
It is the same.
Yep.
Excellent. Yeah, that's pretty tough competition.
Yeah. First is, um, the organization that kind of puts on this whole thing, so there's a new challenge every year. Um, and this year's theme was into space or into orbit. So, everything was, you know, satellites, telescopes, and comets, all of that stuff. But Dean Kamen was the guy that kind of founded first, so.
So, where was the competition?
Is that UNH, which the kids loved. Anytime they can go to college, it's great, but, you know, we went around and did a little tour of the library, saw the, uh, the English Department, and we saw, like, the classrooms that they have there. I showed them how you can just push a button, and the screen pull goes down like a garage door opener, and lights turn on. They were amazed, so it's a really good, good experience for them.
You know, I've been by your classroom, and I've seen you interacting with the students, and it's obvious, um, the value that you give those kids in your class. So, my thanks, and I'm sure the Board would like to say the same, for the work you do with those kids. It's great.
Thank you.
Do you work them?
I'm sorry, Jen isn't here.
Or once the competition is done, are you done?
Yeah, once the competition is done, we're done. I mean, it's intense, and I'd like to give more time, but, uh, we have basically from 3:30 to 4:15 or so.
Right.
Um, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. I know some teams are there, they're not school teams, they're homeschool teams, or they're almost like scouts, and so they're working Sundays and Saturdays and everything else. So, I think we did really well, considering the amount of time that we were put in.
Is this an after-school program?
No.
It is?
I consider, I tell the kids, it's a, it's a sport. Like, they're, I expect them there. I expect them at every practice, and they have to work together. They actually aren't just judged on their robot, they're also judged on, uh, how they work as a team, so they do a little team-building activity there, and we get told that. They're also judged, they have to do a project, so they have to design a device that solves a problem related to the theme. Um, so they researched about that and did a little presentation to the judges.
Do you have a waitlist?
Uh, I did not this year, because we weren't at ten. Um, I have a feeling that if I went to the sixth grade, that I'd probably get to that waitlist, and I didn't want to do that this year, because I was still building the team. Um, next year, with having more, veterans on it, you could say, um, I think would be easier to take on more students, so.
Okay. Well, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to just have a comment and consent?
We're going to move around a little bit. Um, Jen is at a teacher conference, so she said she should be shortly. Um, public comment? And the consent agenda? Do I have a, uh, a motion?
Were we going to remove something from the consent agenda, from the manifest?
I'm sorry.
From the manifest, were we going to remove something from the manifest?
You want to remove something from the manifest?
No, I thought you said there was something.
No, I'm good. Um, we do need an extra signature on it later, though. Yeah, I haven't signed it.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
A second there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just wanted to point out, on the Kingswood Lottery, for the seventh request, which includes tonight, um, that lottery comes up in January, which will come faster than we think, the first meeting. And if you looked at the tuition calculation, you could see the number moving out and the number moving in, and at this point, it looks like we have just three, two or three, yeah, uh, openings. We have, um, a small group leaving, and, uh, not many, there's not enough coming in to actually make it, um, more than that right now. So...
I'm just going to keep moving on. Yeah, principal's report?
Y'all have in front of you, and I'll just sort of just briefly go over. Um, so we, monthly, we have a community day, and Mr. Lampkin is in charge of that. Does a great job. And so, it comes up a theme with the PBIS team. This year, the theme, this month's theme was "Small Sacrifices for Big Impact." Again, during Thanksgiving, and he's done a great job of leaving that out. Kids are getting high-fives, call them, which is basically a hand, and you'll see them posted up around the building, uh, for students who are doing, making small sacrifices. So, we announce it every day, and it's always a nice way for us to build community with all the, with all the students and the staff. And again, I love the theme this month of the "Small Sacrifices." I think I notified you at the last board meeting, the parents are notified via the phone alert system about the Kingswood Lottery. I think that increased a couple of people who, uh, wanted to put their hat in the ring, but, um, it was nice to let them know. We had a crock pot series that we've been scheduled for tonight. I think it was canceled because of the weather, but, um, the UNH Cooperative Extension donates crock pots, and they come in, they do classes for families on how to make crock pot meals. They get to keep the crock pot, they get all the materials provided for free, and it's been great having families come in. Slings and Miss One, the one that runs that out, the gym, typical on Tuesday night. And again, "Small Sacrifice," uh, fourth grade, you know, we had a tour of the Wakefield Food Pantry, um, to show where all their donations, they've been building up, we're going. So, it was nice for the Wakefield Pantry to kind of bring them and say, "Here's where your food goes. Here are the local people, the recipients and beneficiaries of your kindness and your goodwill." And on Veterans Day, Mr. Frost led the chorus as they sang for the entire school. It was the first time to get, kind of, a warm-up as they get ready for the coming holiday season, so they lasted three patriotic songs, and always great to have a bit of patriotism here in the school. What's not on the report, we, we had a snow day, um, last Friday, uh, which was, uh, well, well timed. Um, a couple of things that came into play, you know, it's the first snowstorm, and I worry about people on the road remembering how to drive in the snow. We had, we probably, um, you know, we had a snow day today. There was, uh, a little more snow than I anticipated.
It never stopped.
What's that? It never stopped. Um, so, the buses, uh, we'll go over that later on, but, um, the buses, uh, got back to where they were supposed to be, a little slow at times, um, and a little hairy at times, but they, they got back in.
Oh, great. You can pull it here.
You will hear more.
Okay. Uh, old business, uh, the Wakefield School Board Scholarship Writing Prompt. I did have a question.
You have the two of them in your packet, um...
I did have something I wanted to add to, if that would be, is that, is it too late?
No, it's not too late. What would you do?
Well, did you want to read the questions, or?
Um, what we have so far is, "What do you think is wrong with our country today, and what do you think needs to be done to make it better, and explain the importance of your major in today's society?"
I was thinking of maybe adding something positive to the first question, or "What do you think is working with our country today, and how, what needs, um, what do you think needs to be done to make it better," so that there's a positive offer in there as well. Do we need to choose one?
You do.
Somebody could make a motion on one of these.
I like them both, so if anybody feels strongly about either one, or...
Can you read them?
I can't find them. Um, sure.
Found it.
I'll, I'll read them again anyway. "What do you think is wrong with our country? What do you think needs to be done to make it better?" And, or, "What do you think is right with our country, and what do you think needs to be done to make it even better?" Explain the, and the second question is, uh, is, "Explain the importance of your major," because these are for the high schoolers, these questions. So, "Explain the importance of your major in today's society."
The second one's close to last year's, isn't it? Isn't last year's similar to that?
Yes. Um, it talked about, um, the work that they were going to be doing after high school.
Yeah.
Sandy, do you have a, an opinion?
I kind of liked the first one, myself.
I like the way you worded it.
And the way you worded it.
Okay, the first one, where we also add something positive to the question?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I was concerned that it was too negative. Would you like to make a motion?
I move to accept the first writing prompt, which is, "What do you think is wrong with our country today? What do you think needs to come to make, done to make it better," or, what was the prompt?
Or, "What do you think is right with our country today, and what do you think needs to be done to make it even better?" Uh, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Whose second is that, Sandy?
Pretty much, pretty much.
Yeah.
Pretty much, if I don't hear, it's going to be... Right. Um, uh, we're moving down the Partner Program, and...
They can do the Expenditure Report.
Okay. Uh, since we're moving the Partner Program down to, um, the, uh, F-20 Budget, we can go over the F-19 Year-to-Date Expenditure Report. Oh, these are the, okay. I think these are new.
They are.
So, it's replacing our first sheet.
Thank you.
Yep. Oh, I think one more. Is that enough?
That is.
Do we have enough for...
What you're looking at is, um, uh, an expenditure report after additional items were encumbered to give us...
Student Teacher Conference.
It's okay, you know what? Uh, do you want me to just, I'll just catch her up?
Sure.
We were working around you.
Thank you.
So, we jumped around a little bit. We're, um, picking up at the, um, F-20 Budget, uh, going to come down to the F-19 Year-to-Date Expenditure Review.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to sign it.
And Chris has a new one for you.
Okay. Right in front of me. And today, in the, in the mail, we, um, were asked if, um, we could do a little bit better in giving a clearer picture of where our bottom line was. This is this year's budget. Um, so today, you should have received a spreadsheet that looked like this. If you didn't, I have an extra.
I need you to bring mine to it.
That's okay, I have enough.
Oh, good. I did see it, I just... Do you have yours, Sandy?
I have my own, just a personal.
There are two more, they can go down the way, they won't...
Oh, pen. So, um, I sat down this morning and looked at places that, um, districts generally do encumber. Um, so you're looking at a lot of, um, you can see on the left-hand side, all of those items that are now encumbered, uh, and across the top, what function they were encumbered in. And if you look, for instance, at the larger one, the 2610, that's a lot of operation of, uh, buildings and grounds. So, we encumbered the contracts that we have high to electricity, gas, oil. We encumbered repairs for the buses and fuel for the buses. We encumbered the auditor. We encumbered, you can see it, school board legal, and so on. And, um, after we did those encumbrances, we found that, um, we also wanted to look just at the operating budget. So, if you look at your new, um, spreadsheet, and you look at the 1, 2, 3, 4th column, okay, we now are showing that for the remainder of this year, we have a balance after the encumbrances we did, and after not including the transfers, which we're not in here anyway, after not including the transfers, we have $57,381 left for the entire year. And we are in November, and we have seven months left to go before the school year is over. Now, since we encumbered all of those items, um, it, it, there's a possibility that we may be able to finish the budget this year without necessarily over-expending our appropriation. But later on, in this budget review, we're going to talk about whether or not we should be putting a warrant article for a deficit appropriation, uh, to be voted on by the voters in March. It would be something that would say "up to," um, so it would cover us if, if we were going to, um, if we find out that that $57,381 is not enough. And that would be, we never know what an emergency is, what emergency is going to arise, or what is going to happen. So, um, when we get to that point, I think I will say again, it might be a good idea if we do that, just to cover ourselves.
One broken bus?
Yes.
And it's gone.
Well...
Well, go ahead.
No, no. I was just thinking that, um, we might have some access to expendable trusts if we're over in certain areas, but I don't think there's any in that bus trust. So, yeah.
We, we used to carry higher, um, available balance in years past, from what I have, not, not, and not in, not in any year I've been here, but years past, is that correct?
The available balance where?
On the bottom line?
Right.
Um, this is only my second year, so I know that it was obviously tight last year.
Thirty thousand, I think.
Yeah, we wound up giving thirty thousand at the end of the year. Um, so I don't know where we were at this time last year. Um...
So, um, boards, districts do things differently.
Mm-hmm.
Some boards want to encumber everything that was budgeted, um, so they, they know where they stand if anything, uh, the anomaly happens, so they could tell the difference. And some school districts want to run actuals and, and actually show what's remaining. So, um, that's the position that was taken initially on the, you know, that's the position that's been taken so far this year. So, going forward, if that's the wish of the Board, to continue to encumber the money, um, that has been budgeted for, uh, we will do that going forward. So, you will know that we have, we are, we're obligating all the money that's been appropriated for those lines. Um, so, again, districts have done either-or, um, so that people wanted to know where they truly stand, because what had happened was, in certain districts, you encumber the money that was budgeted, and then all of a sudden, in March, you release some of that money, and they say, "Well, how come all year long I had only $100,000, and now I have $600,000?" Because we encumbered what we thought we were going to be, what was budgeted and what we thought we were going to utilize. So, again, we'll do whatever the Board wishes. The first one that you got was where we are currently, and the only thing that's basically encumbered here are contractual contracts that we have something as backup, and, um, um, contracts with staff that we have already issued. That's the only thing that's on the original one that's, that's obligated.
Um, I, and how often are we going to get, um, the Expenditure Report?
Once a month.
Once a month. So, everybody can put their, what, how they feel. I, I like seeing the encumbrance, I like knowing, um, that what the encumbrance is taken out, um, and with an actual month, monthly report. Um, so, it, we, it won't be a surprise in March, because we should know all along, every month, where we stand every single month. Anybody, would somebody like to...
No, I agree with that.
So, I'm not clear, I'm sorry.
We like the encumbered reports better, when, when it shows the money that we basically know we're going to have to spend, and encumber.
So, so you want to see what's been revised?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that, Sandy, you didn't speak up? You agree? Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
I also wanted to say that we also kind of brainstormed about where we believe we are still going to be over, and we believe we are going to be over in legal, even though we encumbered all of that money. We believe we're going to be over in the Spalding Special Ed, um, extra, um, services that kids are provided, that we actually pay separate from the tuition. Um, even though we encumbered all of that money, we believe we'll be spending more, uh, co-curricular for two reasons. Um, one was that we opened up a stipend line so that we could take out of Appendix B in the contract, those things that actually didn't fit. And the second was, Calumet was not budgeted quite as high as the bill came in this year. And then we believe that we're going to be over in tutoring. We tutor for students who are out either on suspension, or because there's a, a medical issue that they can't come to school, um, and we believe that we're going to be over in those areas as well. So...
If, if a kid has in-school suspension, is there a subsidy required then as well?
No, but I, if it wasn't in-school suspension, work would be being sent down to that student during the in-school suspension.
Do you, do you have numbers at all?
No, um, we're just thinking about where we are now, and the fact that we, uh, we're basing it on history that we have to date, and what we believe we know we're going to be spending in the future. But I don't have real numbers.
Where are you? If something comes up very, very unexpected, um, that does affect our available balance, maybe, um, normally it would be a monthly, uh, report, but if something significant, unexpected occurs, we would like to know about it.
Well, um, what would happen is, we would encumber what we budgeted, so that would be absorbed, and then anything under the, um, anomaly that we didn't anticipate will show, so that line will show over.
Right. I mean, significant, I'm not, right, I'm not looking...
She's saying we don't want to wait for the end of the month to get the report if something big happens?
Right, something big, we want a heads up.
Okay. Well, so, for instance, if I have a sudden, unanticipated out-of-district replacement...
We want to know. We would like to know. Otherwise, once a month is fine, you know, then we, we, if it...
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah. But yes, we definitely would like to know if there's an unexpected...
And I typically do, and I, you know, when I have an unanticipated question, typically ask Chris to put me in our public, except when it gets discussed, but typically do it right now, I think we're, well, we had a lot of unexpected last year.
Are we going to go over this line by line, or? Finish it, okay. Let's see. I think we are going to go to, actually, move it up to the, uh, and this is public, right?
Yes.
The school secretary?
Yes.
There's school secretary salary, is the next thing in the budget. Um, there has been a request for an increase in the secretary. So, I did a little research, and, um, one of the things I noticed is that the town administrators, um, use their administrative assistant, and I looked into ours, uh, just so everybody knows, our administrative assistant, um, salary includes taking the minutes for the Board, and, um, it would eliminate altogether if we used our administrative assistant, the $3,000 a year for, um, the Board's minutes. And, uh, we're on a very, very, very tight budget. We, Priscilla has been absolutely wonderful. It has been a pleasure to have her, um, but it is a luxury, since we already have the $3,000 in the budget to, um, take the minutes at our Board meetings. And, uh, at the moment, we have $57,000 left, so, um, I, my recommendation is to, um, eliminate the position and, uh, confuse our, um, administrative assistant, which, in, per salary, includes the $3,000. Does anybody have any comment, or actually, have a motion?
I second it.
You have to move it.
Yep.
Move.
I don't know how.
Just say move it.
I'm moved.
So moved. And second it.
That's my favorite.
Open for discussion. Um, and Priscilla, we've loved having you, um, but at this point, we're really struggling for money. Yes, your knowledge, your history has brought a lot to the table, and really, really helped, um, this very new Board, as I've heard repeatedly lately, um, come a long way. Does anybody have something they'd like to add?
That sums it up.
Okay. And, uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So... Oh, um, we're going into non-public RSA 91-a32c. Matters which, sorry.
Um, go ahead.
Is that where we're going next?
There's the other one. We're actually going in also for, um, A.
Okay. Uh, 91, A32C and A.
So moved?
Second. All in favor, Colb, aye?
McCall, aye.
Moody, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Right. Are we leaving her?
You have how we calculated the tuition amount that actually went into the budget. Um, because it's up so high, we wanted to provide some kind of explanation about why it was up that high. Um, so, this is just, uh, how we actually went about, um, getting a budgeted number for next year. Um, so, it has gone into the, uh, budget books, um, and I'm, I would be, I am surprised, actually, that no one has challenged us on how we actually calculated the, uh, tuition, because it's up $300,000.
We have the, we have the actual breakdown, right?
Yeah.
And that's what they gave us.
Right, yeah, we went to the area, so I'm...
But that's just what we did, in order to show you how many students we're anticipating it's up, uh, what the tuition rate is, and what that budgeted amount would be based on.
But where did you expect the challenge?
See?
Where did you expect the challenge? You said you were surprised no one challenged you.
Um, because we didn't write into the budget how we actually did it. Normally, we would put a note that says X number of students had X blah blah, and the like.
Oh, okay, but we were, you know, it is what it is, it's black and white, it is what it is.
Just backup.
Yep, it is 187, and...
We can trust that out.
And the area agreement was very clear as to how they came up with the tuition number. Budget review and presentation?
Um, I know that it said we were going to do just those three bullets, but, um, we can do the additional considerations and, uh, contingency and the like. We can get all the way down to warrant article considerations if we do a little bit different process. So, the process that we're going to do is, you received a budget, uh, last night, actually.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, that budget, um, was exactly what you see. What we still haven't looked at, though, are any changes that you want to make, and in your packet, you also have the, uh, staffing considerations that you saw once before. It looks like this, it's in your packet. And, um, as we go function by function, um, you need... And as we go function by function, you need to inform us if you're looking at any changes in that function. Up or down? Are you adding increasing lines, decreasing lines, or adding any of these additional positions? And if you'll notice on those staffing considerations, it tells you which ones would actually go into the 1100s. Okay? So, when we're looking at the 1100 function, which is regular ed, first, if you have any questions, you never got a chance to actually look at this before last night. So, if you have any questions about any lines that you want to answer, if you want to tell us where you have concerns about either adding or subtracting. Isn't it, Kim is here and also Marie, what we are going to be doing is we are going to be, as you tell us, add or delete or change. We're going to keep track of those changes, literally the dollar amounts. So that at the end of this budget work, or this budget article item, you will have a line item budget. We will have completed what it is that we need to complete. Does that make sense?
It does.
Does that make... Okay. So, we can get started and ask first, would you have any questions on the 1100s? That you didn't understand or a line you want explained more, or something that you think is not high enough, low enough? How about questions, any line that you need explained?
Oh, subtract, that was a subtract. Ooh, I hope you're okay there.
Actually, working from this one is where we are.
The one from last night?
The one from last night. I have plenty extras.
I'm putting mine right here.
And I need one?
I just think that neither of you showed us the other thing.
Oh, Jen, I hope that...
Oh, it's just awful tonight. It's got allergies or something. I've got the cold. Do you have another one of those?
Uh, no.
Okay, that's right, I'll find it, it's in here somewhere.
It's on Jen's desk. It's in, oops, there it is.
It's 203. I separated everything out when I was using it.
You're playing this, you're playing the budgeting.
Um, no, that's not the one. That's not the one, those are budget drivers.
Oh, yeah.
It looks like this.
So, we're in the 1100s right off the bat.
We're in the 1100s. 103. I just need the numbers when we get there.
Yeah, I'm thinking, we always talk about all of them beginning years.
Um, I guess, just to make sure, maybe we could, so...
Is it, we could do it quickly, line by line, couldn't we? Sure.
I got lots of questions.
Sure.
So, I don't, I'm making sure, does that work for everybody? I think that's what they're gonna do, so you said I don't want to use this one.
So, elementary teacher salaries includes 32 teachers, but it also includes contract changes, plus the additionals for sixth grade teacher. Okay. Substitute salaries are in at $70 per day.
We need to up that.
Yeah, that was Jen and I. Does that come later?
No. If you want to do it now, we're just gonna...
Currently, subs are at $10 a day, it's $10 an hour. Sorry, did you want to speak first? I don't know.
No.
$10 an hour. Jen and I have been dealing with this for quite a bit. So, $10 an hour, $70 a day, absolutely impossible to get subs.
How's your sub pool?
Growing.
Is it?
It's growing. Yeah, we're good, we're looking better. Now, we're not like to be, but we're looking better.
So, this is, fortunately, they do not have health, any benefits.
No benefits.
No benefits whatsoever, so it's just straight salary.
So, we're looking at raising that so that, I mean, compared to what a teacher gets, it would be nothing still, because there's no benefits included.
Right.
But we need to draw people in.
So, how do we compare to surrounding districts on this sub?
I haven't looked.
Because that would be helpful to know what surrounding districts are doing.
Okay.
Actually, if we could ask Kim, I know she's looked around.
Okay.
$85.
That's where I was gonna go, it was $85.
Everybody around this house?
I don't know that it's everybody, but what I have seen, I would say it's $85.
Okay.
Now, do we, on our substitute salary, do we distinguish between certified and non-certified?
Or is everybody at 70?
Everybody's at 70.
Because I know some districts do $5 lower for uncertified and $5 more an hour for certified. And that after 10 days, if you're non-certified and you're in a position for more than 10 days, you go up the $5 to the certified position.
If you're a long-term sub, you end up with prorated to the BA1 after 10 days, continuous. So, if you're filling in for the same position, I'm filling in for one of the teachers over here for 11 days. On the 11th day, I start on a long-term sub pay, which is a prorated salary of a BA1 teacher.
If they're certified.
If they're cert, they have to be certified.
That's right.
For a long-term position.
I know that in Dover, I don't know if it's changed, when I worked in Dover, the way they did it, that if by some reason they could not find a long-term sub, they could take a non-certified one and they would get the $5 more an hour a day for that job.
I think our system's pretty good. You know, I think right now, our problem is that we don't pay enough, so we don't get them. But if there's already a system in place to move them up, if they're gonna be a long-term sub based on the teacher's pay rate anyway, I think that works fine. Instead of, we've been trying to clean things up instead of, you know, in the negotiation process.
Let's keep it simple.
We've been trying to...
But I'm wondering if we should have two rates, one for certified and one for non-certified for subbing purposes.
If they're not long-term, does it, is there a big difference?
You could end up with a retired teacher who maintained their certification, who is looking for a higher rate somewhere and gonna go. So, yeah, it could.
You mean something like 1250, 915, 85? 85? I'm going, 85 a day is the going rate. And we know what it's like to lose bus drivers, we know what it's like not to be able to get people. And it makes life very, very difficult in a school. So, we almost, it's very difficult to function.
Do we need to vote on that? How do we need to?
Uh, yeah, any change that you want to make, you should, okay? But I'm gonna ask you, so you raised it 85, that's 21% increase. Do you want to raise that line, the 4627 by 21%?
And how much is that?
We haven't used it, though, in the past, but you don't...
No, we haven't.
Right, if we don't need it, it goes back, so...
So, do you want to raise the line by 20%?
Yes. We want to raise it to the going rate, to 85.
We haven't used it because we might haven't had subs to use it on.
Oh, that's awesome. So, you had the opportunity to use it, just no one to fill the position?
We had lots of opportunities, but we ended up filling it without pairs.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, we haven't used it.
No, it has not been raised.
Okay.
It is, it is out of date.
That's all right.
Unfortunately, for too long, so therefore, the increase is more substantial than we would like it to be. But we need to be able to function, so...
So, if I increase that line to 40, by 20%, it is $48,752.40.
So, an increase of $8,000 approximately?
Uh, it's an increase of $8,752.40.
Right, and that's reasonable.
To be able to function.
Because we have a problem with the pairs having to leave the people they're assigned to.
And the note will change to $85 a day.
What, 80 a day? 85?
85.
5 a day, up $15. And...
We can vote on that later, with the $5.
Let's vote after every function.
Okay. No, I meant on the whole price thing, right? She wished she wanted more and...
Oh, I think we're done.
I think we're good?
Okay.
Okay. Student tutoring services. Again, this is tutoring for regular ed and/or suspended students. Moving on.
Mm-hmm.
Student, staff stipends. In the negotiated agreement, there's an Appendix B, which is for co-curricular. And there were some items in there that were simply not co-curricular. And we've listed a couple of them, the after-school coordinator, the volunteer coordinator, and other non-curricular stipends. So, this line is to add those stipends to the 1100s for non-curricular activities.
Did it move dollar for dollar?
I'm sorry?
Did it move dollar for dollar? Was it an even 10 that came out?
No. It wasn't an even 10 that came out, but there are some other stipends that, for instance, the website stipend used to get paid in a particular line. Now, all non-curricular stipends are here.
Does the 10 cover it? I'm sorry.
Will the 10 cover it more than?
I have a question about the stipends, especially volunteer coordinator. How come that's a paid position? I know in the past, in school districts I've worked in, it was a volunteer position that a parent took on.
We're only doing what historically has been done.
It's been done like that for the last seven years that I can speak of. And it is a determination that's made by now, by the CBA, by the union and union stipend team, which includes myself. And they decide where the stipends go, based on the CBA.
So, that's in their contract as part of it?
The volunteer, I don't know if it's that particular position is in there, but they determine. So, if someone comes to the union and says, hey, I want to do this and I want to get a stipend for it, it goes to that committee and the committee makes that determination if it's worthy of a stipend.
My question was just the volunteer coordinator, because I know that some districts use volunteers.
Just saying that that has always been a paid position since I've been here. And if the, if it wasn't, that person could come forward and say, I want to get a stipend for that, and the committee would make that determination.
Okay. Want to move on?
Yep. Teacher health insurance. This is where, in building the budget last year, four family plans were missed. They're not all on this line, but that is why the line is up $70,488.
Why wouldn't they all be there?
Because teachers are not just in the 1100s, they're also in the 1200s. They're also people who are covered under the teacher contract and guidance in nursing throughout. So, I'm just explaining this particular line, so this is the teachers that happen to be budgeted here.
Is there a way, when we're presenting this, that this number can be, I mean, you forgot it on here, right? Oh, one of them. That says that, I think you had it under budget drivers or something.
Right.
Because there's nothing we can do about that. We have to pay that money.
Right.
So, can we kind of separate that when we present the budget, say, we don't have an option? This $70,000 and whatever else you have, if there's more of them, then we don't have an option. We have to pay that, we can't, we can't lose this.
Right. There is another $25,000, $26,000, but it's in special ed. That's already a budget driver and the whole function is a budget driver. So, we actually captured all four of those plans within those two areas. So, it already is.
So, it will stand out?
It will stand out because it's part of the special ed function, which will be a budget driver.
I know, but I guess I wouldn't want it loaded into just special ed. I'd like it to be kind of notated as a, by an accounting error that we are stuck with, not something that we're increasing.
Right. And when you look line by line in the special ed, you will see that number under health insurance.
Fixed, yes. We were hoping for a fixed cost.
No, I'm just hoping that we can, when the budget committee is looking at this and saying, well, you guys are spending a lot of money, they can take this $70,000, plus if there's another 25 in the special ed, and say, oh, there's $100,000 that was an accounting error that we are not responsible for and it's raising our budget by $20. And we have to pay it.
We can do that. I'll just decrease the special ed then, that much.
Do you see what I mean?
So, they'll both sit there at the same time.
Right. I don't want to have to try to pass that as something new that we're spending.
But the number won't change for the budget driver, because it's already in the special ed.
Do you see what I mean? I don't want it...
Sure. Uh, moving down, the next line is teacher dental insurance. Dental went up, health went down. Okay? That's why that line is up. On teacher FICA, that's obviously 0.0765 of salary line. Other FICA is FICA for the substitutes. That's 0.0765 of that line.
How come there was nothing prior for that?
Because it wasn't budgeted and it should have been.
So, again, another fixed cost that goes into the...
It goes into that pail of, we're not spending extra money, somebody didn't account for this correctly.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Because we really, we shouldn't have to eat that in the whole, oh, you're spending too much money. Because right now, we're talking over $100,000 right there in money we have to pay that was an error. So, I don't really want that to look as, oh, we're spending money freely. This is somebody screwed up last year and we're stuck with it. Is that correct?
It's correct. It was just that we paid the FICA, it just came out of a different line.
But it's now showing here.
Right. But it doesn't mean that we didn't pay it. Do you understand what I mean? It just came out of a different line. In other words, instead of having a FICA support line, we would have just taken it out of a FICA line.
But it's showing up on this number as a variance, as an increase in our budget for this year.
Because we moved it.
Because, so we don't want to...
But it's not that we didn't pay it this year.
Okay.
Or any?
I do. But I don't want it to show as a...
New money.
Right, a new, that we're spending money.
I have noted that one as well. Increase in ESL services. You know, guys, you can say this is also required and we don't have any choice, because we are obligated by law to pay for ESL services.
Right.
So...
You have nothing to do about it.
Yeah. It has to go in the pile of...
Fixed costs.
Fixed costs.
Uh, the next one is tuition, we've already talked about that one.
Actually, though, we'll talk, I think we should just have a discussion here for the camera that it is... Oh, we already did it earlier today.
We did.
Yep.
Supplies, our flat textbooks, $75,000 for the literacy materials.
I think that needs to go up.
I just was gonna say, this is about one of the only, do you know that our curriculum is older than our kindergartners? Six years?
Easily.
Easily. It's older than our kindergartners. So, this only hits, only hits reading, the books, not math, right?
Yeah, it was consumable textbooks, which I assume are workbooks. It was written in the, in here.
And that's in, yeah.
Textbooks, I mean, um...
Those are your math and focus workbooks.
Right. So, that's saying that for the whole year, next year, the only thing our school is going to buy is the FMP books and some workbooks.
Right. Nothing to do with math, nothing to do with science.
Well, the workbooks are math, but still, it's not much.
What you're saying is not new, you know, looking at it.
No, there is no evaluation, there's been no evaluation of the curriculum, so...
So, what would you like to do on that line?
Would you agree with that?
Oh, yeah, I have a question on that, though. You know, we have, there's such a thing as hard textbooks, but there's also online textbooks now. Are we using any online textbooks?
Not textbooks, no.
Because that...
We have eBooks, but not a textbook.
Yeah, because that can maybe bring down costs for textbooks, by having access online.
They're not, they're not cheaper. I mean, U and H, I mean, they're not cheaper. They might use them whether you use them or not. I mean, you still...
Well, they use iXL, which is on here later, for a big jump, too, I don't understand, but...
I'm talking about textbooks and I know that at the college level, a professor has the opportunity that they're not, if they're not going to use the whole book, they can pay for just certain parts of the book that they need for their curriculum.
Asking this as a devil's advocate. When we have testing, one of the issues is that some of the kids struggle with the computer test. Do we want to, in their regular learning of their classes every day, add the struggle of the computer? And that, I mean, we're fighting for new computers for everybody. We're looking to try to get those in to get internet access in other classrooms.
A lot of the, a lot of things that are online can be read to the students. And some of the tests that they take online can be read to them as well. So, that's an option.
And this, what I would think we should, if we could just get a little bit better, we're talking about how much. They're all great ideas, absolutely. So, maybe, since we really can't decide here right now which way to go, but maybe we can come up with a number that might start the process of rejuvenating or redoing our curriculum, which has been neglected.
But I think it'd be nice to know exactly what we need to do before we add to it, to something.
I don't think we're gonna have time for that.
We're not gonna have time for it before the 27th.
Not to make a change for the next school year.
Do you feel that we need more money for some, for some of the programs we already have that we're using that aren't being serviced by buying consumable workbooks?
I think a lot of this stuff's been addressed in the supply line. I think a lot of stuff's been addressed in the supply line. I don't think it would be something we'd want to do, to put something as a placeholder right now with this budget that we have in front of us. You know, we addressed the fountain penell, I do think that if that's the will of the board, and I think, you raise your point, we have not looked at the math curriculum and, you know, evaluated it in the last six years. I certainly think that'd be something the teachers would be willing to look at, and so be prepared for the next budget season, to look at that.
But that's another year, that's another year, Jerry.
I understand, if it's the will of the board to go forward, if it's the will of this board to go forward and put money into the budget, for us to look at evaluating the program between now and the end of the school year, we will do that.
But, so you think this money, this seventy-five thousand right here, is broken down on the pages by, seventy-five for F and P, and the other, what was it, like, I don't know, a two thousand dollar amount or whatever for consumables?
Yeah.
That's all, all your teachers are going to need this year for textbooks and supplies to teach the kids?
That's what we need for, that's what we need to replace what we use in the consumables. We have not, it's not, it has not been our practice in the recent past to make determination about money for programs we haven't evaluated. When we make the math in focus, we looked at three or four different programs, we came up with a decision on that at the end of the school year, about what program we were going to go forward on. I just want to make sure that we're going to take money, we're going to use it responsibly, and I know you do as well, but that's not been our practice to look at, to ask for money for programs we've yet to take a good, hard look at.
I know, but it's taken us a very long time to take a very hard look at some of the programs. Actually, how much, I think we need a good, hard look at our programs, and we're talking now already next year, nineteen-twenty, not this year. We have fifty-seven thousand dollars left for this year, for heaven's sake, so what would it, does any, do you have a ballpark for us for...
Textbook?
Not even textbooks, I'm really looking for an evaluation of a curriculum.
Evaluation wouldn't cost us anything.
Oh.
Yeah, we pilot, so we'll look at our program, and we'll pilot, and that's what we do, we'll look at a bunch of ones that are out there, and pilot stuff to see what is working.
We are, we will say that...
Evaluate the math program.
What we are doing right now, Trace, is we are, in this budget, looking at a math intervention program, which would be, it would lead us into looking at, does that same program work as a tier-one intervention, a tier-one? So, you've got the tier-two intervention, would that be something we'd want to use as a regular program?
I see the intervention, but I feel like we're putting, we've had a lot of interventions in six years, so it is time to, to address it, and...
I think our math in focus ran us around sixty-five thousand when we put it in place six years ago.
So, would we be comfortable, maybe, conservatively, do something like fifty to try and start to, the beginnings of updating our curriculum? Is that Tony's?
Before we add money to this, I feel, and I might be wrong, and teachers might be able to answer this question for me, when you're considering new programs, don't textbook companies, if they think you're going to be, might be using it, give you, I don't think they charge you, they give you books that you can look at and implement, is that true?
That's what we did math in focus.
So, that's not money we necessarily need to be put into the budget, because textbook companies want to give you, want to get you, so they're more than willing to give you money.
Piloting a program doesn't cost us anything.
Yes. But you need, you don't need to buy materials?
No, so, when they know you're on the hunt for a new program, they'll send you a sample set for, like, a particular grade level, and then we can, then that's how we test it out.
I actually took that a step further. What I mean is, what if you choose, you choose one?
Oh.
Now, then you need money. Thank you. Okay. I, that's right. I'm actually taking it a step further, saying you actually find something that's significantly more current, better, newer, and we don't have to wait.
If we were to, if the money were there this year, and we were to pilot a program or two, or more, between now and the end of the school year, and the money were there, we'd be in a better position in the summertime to purchase that program for the start of the fall.
But this is, but we're talking about, this is for next year's budget. So, personally, I feel that if you're going to pilot something, what probably wouldn't happen until, you know, I don't know, I don't know if we have enough time to do it this year, but what I'm thinking of, if we did it next year, you pilot a program, you're not going to go start something middle of the year for kids. I don't, I don't see.
Actually, are we, do you guys need any more? Are we ready for a vote?
I would say that we do have time to pilot the programs this year. Again, last, the last time we did this, I think we piloted, jet four programs, four programs over the course of the year, we pulled them down by quarters.
So, you could pilot a program and choose it, and be ready to go next fall?
Which program?
If you had funding.
Would we choose?
For the fall, correct?
I'd feel better knowing, where are we going to start?
I would certainly start by piloting the Bridges program. That's what we're looking at right now.
That's a lot.
There's a lot, is that?
So, and that's, that'd be what I would jump off with, hopefully for the first year.
Yeah.
And what do we know, piloting, you know, if we pilot a program and we want to bring it in?
Anything to get it started?
What on average has cost them?
Okay. Anything to get the foot in the door.
What number are you talking about?
Actually, we very much like the idea.
Sixty-five thousand, that's what she needs to replace all the books.
How much?
Sixty-five thousand.
Pilot's free, to put the books into sixty-five.
To be ready for fall.
To be ready for fall, you need sixty-five for books.
How much?
Sixty-five. Sixty-five, six, six.
Sixty-five percent more than what I thought.
Do we know that?
Seventy-five thousand.
In addition to that line.
With pilot free all this year, and then instead of wasting an entire year to once again upgrade a very, very old curriculum, we could be up and running by the fall if we've, if...
But do we know that fifty thousand would be enough to pilot a program?
They were over here saying sixty-five is what's needed, but I would probably try to do it at fifty. I would be uncomfortable going higher than that.
We're not going to have enough money to fully, you know, they decide they want it, I'd rather have money and to have the money that will get everything we need for the program, versus, you know, just doing it, we've just, I'm sorry, we've done too many things halfway.
Just to get a start on doing anything, you guys want to?
From my opinion, and I would rather have the money there to start in the fall, if that's truly what we want, versus doing fifty thousand, and where are we going to come up with fifteen thousand more? We've always had tight budgets.
Curriculum is what we're here for. You could teach, if you have strong curriculum, you could teach anywhere.
I would rather have the amount sixty-five.
Running sixty-five thousand dollars to the textbook line.
To update a very, very old curriculum.
And what curriculum is that again?
That means the sixty-five thousand dollars will be added to eighty-two, five-oh-three.
Yep.
Okay, and I'm going to, just we're all on the same page, because I have to turn it on. Eighty-two, five-oh-three, that's sixty-five thousand, is one forty-seven, five-oh-three? And the note will say literacy and math materials.
Update curriculum. To update a very dated curriculum.
Can we add that?
Yeah.
I would like it.
I would like it.
Because older than our kindergartners.
Old, I like that one. Older than our kindergartners.
The math program is...
Jerry just talked about it.
Well, we're talking about math in focus, that's only been here six years, I don't call that...
Kindergartners are five.
No, I don't call that a really old program.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on, though. Ready?
The next software contains IXL math supplement.
Why'd that go up so much? More people using it?
Yeah, more people are using it.
I love IXL.
Yeah.
Oh, good. New furniture, I'm, this note is wrong, it's actually second grade tables, is that right, Jerry?
Yes, I already corrected that on my sheet.
Thank you, you guys are good. Questions there?
No, we saw them, they need their old...
And that's all we need? Again...
There is the furniture in Joe's line, Joe's furniture line.
Okay, good, good answer.
The next line is...
I didn't say that, because Mr. Kearns is sitting over there.
Regular aid dues, based on what staff put in.
So, we don't, we only have a hundred and fifteen dollars that we're going to need for...
Based on what the staff requested. Jerry actually has a book, it's sitting right next to you.
I do have a, these are in here, those are the looking at, I believe, primarily art.
Okay. Now, we're going to look at the...
Can we go back to the computers?
Yep.
I see we have nothing in new computers.
We do, it's under technology.
Okay, so that's all been moved?
Yep. To the twenty-eight, twenty, the technology function. If you look at now this sheet, okay, under eleven hundreds, actually, Marie corrected me, we are, we would not budget the SRO there, we would budget the SRO in twenty-one, ten. However, the rest of those, the increase in math intervention, the full-time Morton Gillingham, the STEM, and the regular aid for kindergarten, are all items which, if you support and want them in the budget, we have exactly what that will cost, and we can add those.
If we do get a math, if we do pilot a math and choose one, do we still need the math intervention?
I believe so.
Intervention has to do with students, no matter what curriculum you're using, that are identified as struggling behind their classmates, so intervention is something that we would offer those students, and the math interventionist would be, much like the ELA is, either pull out or push in in additional programs.
So, we're going from a one to a one, so we're going to, we're looking for a part-time person there, and it's going to be...
Perhaps. We have somebody who's part-time now that might be interested, but we haven't approached that person, otherwise, we would hire.
But we're looking at like sixty-two, sixty...
You can put in a whole one if you like.
Seventy-one, eighty-one, ninety-one, ninety-four, we're looking at like ninety-five thousand dollars for a point-five position?
It would have benefits if the person who is now half-time would be interested in doing it. Did that make sense?
It did, because they'll be eligible for benefits, because they're going to do something else half-time and be eligible, but that's a big check to change for adding a part-time. Would it be more cost-effective to add a separate part-time?
Could be. Or we could just order, do a full-time, seventy-two, one-one-two would probably do it for us. You know, the BA five, we could cut that in half, and then there would be no benefits with it again? Just FICA, yeah. So, you think that's too much to add to the budget? Fifty-two, six, twenty-five, doesn't make sense?
When you do that half-time, the benefits really hit hard.
Yes. You see an impact.
I mean, they're the same either way, the extra is just the hourly. I don't know, these are hard. I know I've looked at them for quite a while.
By the way, also, Emery, I'm going to kind of ask you, we wouldn't do the elementary curriculum person here, we'd do it in the twenty-two, twenty, Marie?
Sorry?
Would you budget the elementary curriculum person in the twenty-two, twenty, under professional development?
No.
No? You'd put it in the eleven hundred? So, you would put it in the eleven hundred? Okay.
This goes in, so this is...
I'll stick it out.
And what this is, we're at one point now, it brings us to a part-timer, and of course, it's this high because of this.
So, what's the, what's the benefit here to taking somebody who's existing and making them full-time?
None. I don't know that we'd be able to hire a half-time.
Half-time's hard.
They're really hard, because they're in demand.
They already have it, and they're interested in it.
Haven't asked that person yet. We're thinking that we have a person who's a half-time interventionist, perhaps they would want to do an additional half-time interventionist, and that's what it would cost. Otherwise, we would have said full, and full would be seventy-two, one-one-two, because it's really hard to hire the intervention people. They're like ESL teachers, they're very rare.
So, the fifty-two here includes all the other stuff, all the, is that what you're saying? Okay, I was reading that it didn't to begin with.
It does. It includes salary at MA two, it includes health, it includes dental, it includes retirement.
And you did include for us on the other side here, that basically this package, this package brings us to increasing the taxes at a dollar and five cents per thousand, and it's two-hundred-and-ten dollars a year on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house.
So...
If we included, if we happen to include everything in there.
The total of all those considerations are five-hundred-and-seven-thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars, and yes, if we added it before we added other things, that would increase the budget to about a fifteen percent.
Which is a dollar five per thousand, or two-hundred-and-ten dollars per, for a two-hundred-thousand-dollar property.
Right, for these positions, correct.
Sorry, is that number you just said, does that include the, did you take out the SRO element?
No, the rest of it was not, yeah, it was in that number.
It's in the whole, it's the whole package. It's not, it's not in the right spot.
Where does the STEM teacher fit into our current science?
She didn't pull that out of the eleven hundred. Nope, that was the whole thing.
Can I ask, can I ask them, can I? Can I ask them questions?
Yeah.
I didn't know that. So, where does this new STEM position, how does that affect you?
Especially if it was Project Lead the Way, it would...
It would be all Project Lead the Way?
I love Project Lead the Way.
Yeah, so, Project Lead the Way is mostly about engineering, and I wouldn't say that I don't do any engineering, I definitely do some stuff, but I wouldn't say that it's most of my curriculum, my curriculum is mostly content based about just science concepts in general, where Project Lead the Way is more about taking an engineering idea, how do you solve this, how do you redesign your, the thing that you designed and make it better? So...
It would take from your class at all?
Oh, no, not at all.
How would you fit it in, in a busy school day?
As an IA?
Yeah, and so, one specific example, like, I have a 3D printer in my classroom right now, and I probably do like five lessons with it, just based on my time and what I can provide the kids. We're having another STEM teacher, they provide much more use of that, it's not used as much as they can be.
The neat thing about Project Lead the Way is they have modules that stand alone, so it easily fits into an IA kind of a rotation, so that kids could complete one, two, as many as there's time for it.
So, is that an elective sort of, in seventh and eighth grade, is that how that would work? Well, IAs start like in below seventh grade, so what would your rotation turn into, like, seven days?
We'd have to, we'd have to look at how that rotation would work out.
It's really packed, and it is.
It is. We did have, you as you recall, we did have another IA in there at one point, we had libraries and IA some time ago.
How'd that work for you?
Well, we ended up having to reduce it, but, you know, I think people would have liked to have the library, have stayed in there, that would have also allowed some more time for, for teachers for planning time.
So, it'd free up some, it would free up some time?[1695.01]
It would free up some time for regular classroom teachers, have another IA, and you end up, you know, what you can do is you can, you can go into a rotation, like it's a six-day rotation rather than a week. So you're going, you identify the day as day one through six, rather than Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, what day, you know, so you end up extending the week of the rotation a lot.
That's happening now, right?
Of course, yeah. Middle school is a one through, is a one through four, a one through four rotation. I'm gonna have to count up the colors for, for elementary.
And is this, this is a necessary thing, right, to comply with?
It does comply with the new law that we're supposed to be offering computer science, engineering, and digital literacy at every grade, K through 12.
The problem, this would create a new position, right?
It would.
It would.
And we don't have space as it is. Where would we put it?
Project Lead the Way, though, would you say, Gavin, if they had the materials, it could be on a, either in your room or on a cart when they needed it?
Couldn't be in your room.
I don't know.
Because you're teaching.
I didn't mean teaching it in your room. I mean, storage and moving it to a classroom?
We don't give away your closet.
We've seen the closet.
I think it depends, it depends on what is there, what they need for storage. Like, I basically have every nickel and cranny full of stuff for me. And I think it depends on what the curriculum is. From what I've looked at for Project Lead the Way, there's a lot of materials involved. And I think it would tough, be tough to do on a cart, bring everything around, like, I think they need something. There's something they create, could it be in my room, probably, during IA? But I don't know how that would work for other grade levels.
Okay. I have another question. If we didn't have a STEM program, even though it's required, does that affect our certification by the state?
It will eventually, because it will become part of the minimum approval standards for schools.
I personally feel that right. I mean, it sounds like a good program, but right now, we don't have the space. And, and we don't have a space for adding a teacher that they could have a space where they could work out of?
I think, I think we need to focus on offering the curriculum that we need to offer and figure out the space.
But if we don't have the space, it's not gonna be implemented the way it needs to be implemented. And we put more, more strain on what we need. I think we need to first deal with what we have in the school, bring it on as soon as we can, but we need to have the space. And we don't have the space right now for this program.
All right, is somebody ready for a vote?
I think that we need to offer, we have to offer and figure out where to fit it.
Are we doing, are we doing individually, or are we doing the whole thing?
I was thinking just for that one.
Okay, so it's a greeting.
Are we doing just the 1100s at this point, Chris?
Yes, because we need to add the 1100s and then we can move to the next section.
Is this something, is this something we could wait to after we?
No.
We must adopt a budget tonight.
What I'm saying, after we finish going through this, could we...
In case we eliminate something, I think she's thinking.
Wait, no. You need to make up your mind whether you want that in the budget or not. It can't depend on this or that.
And is this extra? I mean, is it already in here? I'm getting a little fuzzy at this point. This is going in under my 1100?
Other than the SRO. The SRO is going into something else.
Right, 2110.
So what we're asking is, the Curriculum Coach, which was Jim Lampron this year, is part-time, which was extremely successful, Fanta Simpson was extremely successful. He is, so that would, that's the position there, was so successful that would be for K through six, you said? For K through six, expanding the role instead of just K through three. The math intervention, which is part-time. The Gillingham, which is...
Wasn't the OG thing, wasn't that supposed, weren't you getting a grant for some of that? Was it not for the instructor? It was for the, the grant didn't apply to this part? Wasn't there a grant that you found for the OG? You can just say no if I'm wrong.
You had it in IDEA at one point?
Oh, correct. And what we talked about when we first talked about this is that there is a potential of about 18,000 more that we would have to add to specialized contracted services. We don't have Norton Gillingham specialists, because we provide tutoring before and after school to certain kids now. It is something that could be put into an IDA grant, that 18,000, or a position, but our IDA grant's not large enough to put a full position into it.
I have a question about the math interventionists. We've had math interventionists in the past. When we had them, did we see our test score, how were our test scores in math when we, when we had a math interventionist at the school?
Historically, I couldn't, I couldn't speak to that. In my time here, we've only had one math interventionist in the building over the last seven years. So, you know, I just couldn't, I have looked into that data.
Jerry, I was just looking at that Bridges program too.
Correct.
Which has not been the program necessarily that they've had available to them.
You know, it's, it's obviously hard. We need all of these things, and it's very, very difficult.
They're all important.
So what we could do is put it forward, and then the Budget Committee comes back and makes, has us rethink.
Could we do the Curriculum Coach part-time?
Oh, yeah. Actually, Cindy, remember you asked me to see how Fremont was doing it, their curriculum? I did. And what they do is they do $150 an hour, actually, Kim found this out, $150 an hour for 22 days a year, and I, I estimate it's a seven-hour day.
I'm in the wrong job. Wait, I have a job.
So when I actually worked this out for 30, I actually did this, when I actually worked this out for 36 days, which would be three a month, it came out to, I can find the number, but it came out to around $40,000. But we won't get the coach part, we would probably, well, we would get a little of each.
It doesn't save that much money. Or we went from full-time to three days a month for a difference of...
$32,000.
$32,000. That's huge.
So we did part-time?
I'm sorry?
Is that what you're saying, is if we did part-time for the curriculum?
We could just cut that in half.
Right, I didn't mean, the hourly is exorbitant, so...
Right.
But could we do that as a, as a .5, which for 52, like the math interventionist?
It would be less than that, because we would take the 72112 and cut it in half. And that would also eliminate the health, the dental, retirement.
Well, I would like to recommend that.
I'm with you on that, you like that, you like that?
Yeah.
My only problem is, is how, can we find someone part-time?
No.
But we can try. And so it's, it seems pointless. Seems pointless to have it in, in there if we're, if going for part-time.
You won't, quite honestly. I mean, the Curriculum Coach is typically, I mean, we went through this whole interviewing process three years ago, Jen. Had a hard time finding someone who fit our needs at the time, because we were looking for a very specific skill set. But what we did find, there were a lot of people who were retired or semi-retired, and who wanted to be that Curriculum Coach, who had a lot of background and experience, and I think would probably bump into that same kind of thing, and knowing the restrictions of people who are currently in New Hampshire retirement.
Is there anything wrong with that, though? Is that good?
No, it's not bad. I'm just saying, when we went through this, is this what we found? We didn't find anybody that fit our specific needs at the time, because we were looking, again, for a specific skill set, curriculum, you know, coaching style. In this case, I might be looking for something a little bit different, maybe more core-oriented, whether it was math or language arts. But what we did find in that process was, most people we were looking at were semi-retired, they were looking to stay within the retirement system. And again, there are restrictions when they can only work so many hours.
Do you pay them on the teacher's salaries schedule though, Jerry?
That would be something we'd have to determine.
Exactly. So we're very high on the schedule for somebody retired as a teacher.
I, I, I have made a decision. I do actually think that we need these things. We will, our children will get behind, and the purpose of educating them is, will be tougher and tougher going forward. I would like to recommend the half-day Curriculum Coach, if we can work it out. Might help offset some of the costs of the math, the curriculum. Will help offset some of the cost of the curriculum cost that we added. Does anybody have any other counters?
Okay, the half salary would be 36,056.32.
But that includes health, so half of the salary would be off of 37, and then you get rid of health.
Right. I'm just on salary now, so we are gonna get rid of health, because it would be less than what would qualify for benefits. We would have the dental. Do we go off of that to part-time?
Not to.
No, okay. Retirement, and if we don't get a retiree, we might need that. So we're gonna keep retirement in and FICA. So it's gonna be 3605632, plus the FICA on that, plus the retirement on that at the new rate.
So do you have to subtract out the health?
Yes, we would subtract out the health and the dental.
Yes.
So the salary is 37895 for a full, so you would half that. That would be 18,947.50. And then you would add retirement off of that, FICA. It's not half of the 72112.
I get it.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, I'm sorry. Thank you, it's gonna be much lower.
Yes.
Again, Kim?
I haven't.
You guys have it?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Marie.
No, it's fine, you're doing it, it's fine. I took this person that is currently working part-time, the 50 point, I'm using the same exact formula. And it's about $25,000.
Okay. We almost saved all of the...
Okay.
Look at that.
Sandy has a question about para-kindergartners. Do we not have kids in those classes that need a special ed aide?
There are times that you don't. Two years ago, when we were going through this, yeah, two, two, four years ago, we went through this process, and we decided we're gonna add the regular ed classroom aide into the kindergarten. Now, we've differentiated between para and classroom aide, because that paraprofessional is a study, especially in specific, whereas classroom aide, kindergarten needs, you know, needs somebody in there with them. I mean, it's busy anyway during the, any regular time of the year. Come wintertime, when you're getting kids dressed, getting kids undressed, all these things, you know, to go outside, it's very challenging. Now, we put this in a couple of years ago, and then mysteriously it disappeared. It was in the line, money disappeared, I'm not quite sure where it went. But it disappeared, and we're trying to figure out where that, and again, I really need to bring this back. These, these poor kindergarten teachers are, are struggling to keep, you know, what they can together in that room.
And?
We did do the research, and currently, we do not have a preschooler that would be entering kindergarten requiring parent support. And the other piece I would want to add to that is, we need to try to get away from thinking about our specialized paraprofessionals supporting the whole classroom. Because that's, we're in a place right now where we're using our paraprofession, our specialized paraprofessionals in a bigger way and not, I shouldn't say not meeting the needs of our kids. We're meeting the needs of our specialized kids. But they're being asked often to do things that we would rather have regular ed paraprofessionals do.
You're not meeting the...
Parents is the place to start.
You're not meeting the specifics of the IAs for the individual kid.
In some cases, we're not.
Right.
Right. So in both, I mean, we did the research, June, it can be very different, I mean, September can be different than November, and you might have, but right now, we do not have a paraprofessional, a student with a paraprofessional going into kindergarten.
Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion? All right, I'm ready for a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the 1100, improving student achievement choices without the SRO and half of the elementary curriculum coach for the 2020 budget.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just so we can be clear and so we can get the changes, you're doing the entire slate except for the SRO?
Because he's going somewhere else, right?
And you're having the elementary curriculum coach?
Yes.
At half, right?
At half.
$25,000.
Okay.
And the SRO is later?
Yes, it is.
All right.
So we're putting in the half math interventionist, the Norton Gillingham, the STEM, and the regular aide, and half of the curriculum these weeks.
So that function here comes up to what?
But all the numbers are here, so... And it'll all go into the teacher line at the top? No, the regular ed aide will go into support.
Well, there's also the, yes, everything else will be teacher.
Will be teacher. So we'll increase, do we even have a line? Yeah, supports at staff salaries?
No.
Yep. Line two.
You want the number?
No.
Well, I just didn't know if you wanted to...
I was just trying to ask, of course.
Kim, if you wanna check, explain.
We're gonna get a bottom line for the 1100s before we move on, and then you're gonna adopt that section.
Well, we, we took, we added in curriculum and we took out in...
Well, we gotta make sure that that's what we're doing.
Yep.
It's gonna take a bit.
Okay. You're allowed.
You got a couple minutes.
So we're doing the heart stuff first?
Yeah, actually, it should go a little easier as we get through...
Because that was a big one. Obviously, it's the, it's the heart and soul of...
Yeah, I don't see too much else as we move through this.
Oh, goodness, I think this is the first time I feel like, I know, like, that we're moving forward, very, very excited.
I think, I know. Yes.
Uh, we just did the hard stuff. We're gonna, we're gonna be...
I'm just saying, I'm just throwing it out there so you don't...
I already thought of that, Jerry.
I have to, but I'm...
Already thought of this.
I might go...
I'm a realist here.
Listen, be positive. I'm sorry. Those are our buddies from... I called them buddies.
If you wanna use a different number, that's fine.
I don't want to talk to you anymore.
We don't, we don't want to talk to you anymore.
While these two ladies are doing that, we could hear about the Partners Program.
Good use of time.
I just used it really well.
I forgot that dream. Actually, you did a presentation for the board on this.
I thought I had extra pieces of that presentation that I could pass on, but I can't see on the lineup. So the Partner Program is a program for students that fall in the neurodevelopmental disorder categories. We, in, from last year to this year, our, our students that fall in those four categories was up by 6.1%. So we had a significant increase. So the Partner Program is a program that is brought to the school from New England Center for Children. And what that, that includes is a master-level teacher who has a minimum of three years experience working with students with neurodevelopmental... Sorry, I'm trying to...
Challenges, let's go.
So they have a minimum, a minimum of three years' experience working with students with neurodevelopmental disorders. That includes 10 hours of a board-certified behavior analyst. We currently contract for Paul School for 16 hours, so that will offset that part of the budget by 10 hours a week. It includes the ACE curriculum, we currently have budgeted for the ACE curriculum, $5,000. The ACE curriculum is a curriculum developed by New England Center for Children that is geared directly towards kids that have neurodevelopmental disorders. And it includes training for the ABA tutors. So what I've done in other schools where we've brought the Partner Program in is open that training up to other staff members. So what I find happens is that this kind of almost begins, it almost looks like a train-the-trainer model. So as the, as the year, as the year goes in, you find more and more teachers and paras and ABA tutors saying, wow, I'm learning more and more, and it spreads, kind of spreads like wildfire. So our teachers start to begin to better understand those kids. It's kind of a reverse inclusion setup. So they have their own classroom, each student and their ABA tutor has a cubby in their classroom, they start their day out in their classroom, but they go into their regular ed classroom as much as they can. They go back to the Partner Program with their ABA tutor when they're not able to be successful in the regular classroom. So there's all sorts of levels. You might have a student that is spending four hours a day in the Partner Program and two hours a day in the classroom. You might have a student that's spending an hour a day in the Partner Program and the rest in the classroom. The, it accommodates seven students. The other piece I was thinking about that I'm not sure I talked about the last... The other piece I was thinking about that I'm not sure I talked about the last time is what, what the partner program can do for us and our students differently than what we do when we send a student out of district is the kids start to generalize the skills they're learning. So, they generalize the skills into their classroom, they generalize the skills into the home, because there's a home component to it. So, there's a clinical meeting once a month where the BCBA and the head teacher meets with the parents and trains the parent to do what we're doing here in the home. One of the things that we don't do well for our kids that are on, that have the neurodevelopmental disorders is we don't help them generalize their skills. It's very fragmented and so, these are kids who are, who are potentially very bright, that they have a wire not working in their brain that makes a certain parent day not successful. I'm not sure I'm explaining that all that.
Exactly. How many kids do we have that fall under this category?
We currently would fill the program.
Okay.
We have more than seven students that fall under those four categories that I look at when I say were a six point one percent increase, but we have seven students that would, would immediately fall into that category. And a few of those seven are potential out of districts if we don't do something for them.
And where would we put this?
That's contingent, it is another kind of contingent on, upon space. I don't know, Jerry, weigh in. You've said to me that when you're looking at space and looking at programming, the partner program is kind of a high priority for you.
Yeah, it is. You know, a part of this, a contingent on space if the, the project that we're planning on, the, the activity area passes. If that, if that gets through, then I'd like to, what I would like to do is I would take the students, the special ed case managers out of the modular and put them out here. And I would have, I would propose to put the partner program out there in the modular.
Um, sorry, other schools, are there other schools in the area?
Yep, Milton has, uh, Milton Elementary School has a partner program. Northwood Elementary School has a partner program. They started out only in Massachusetts. They, I think that there are, there are like fifty-some-odd partner programs in the state of Massachusetts. I think New Hampshire right now probably has about thirty in the state of New Hampshire. They've grown significantly.
And what do the students do during the day when they're not able to stay in the classroom currently?
They do their, whatever curriculum they're working on, they're working on in the classroom. The prep, the concept behind the partner program is what we call discreet trial instruction. That's what our ABA tutors are trained to do. So, with discreet trial, a student doesn't move on to the next skill until they've mastered the skill that they're working on. So, a lot of the academics that these kids are working on is through the discreet trial approach, which is the ACE curriculum that we purchased. So, bottom line, it's a, it, when you have the other areas of your budget offset, it would be about sixty-eight thousand dollar increase, special ed contracted services. When I talk about the partner program, and if you wanna research it, I wouldn't say Milton Elementary Schools, but close as though they, a decision needs to be made tonight on your budget. I lost my train of thought.
Who they could do it?
It's a long, you know, your first year of the partner program is your biggest year of, of financial investment. It's a long-term systemic approach to educating kids with disabilities. And in this budget, I'm thinking long-term when I'm proposing anything, especially contracted services right now, I'm thinking of models that are long-term, that we can, that can be systematic. One of the models I'm thinking about is the speech-language assistant versus a full-time speech pathologist, which is something we had in the past. So, the partner program is a long-term systemic approach to meeting the needs of these kids.
So, you're, you're giving a rough estimate of sixty-eight thousand dollars. That's not including the savings of not sending them out of district.
No, that's not.
So, realistically, we'd be looking at sending-
Seven.
Right, but, so even at least one of them could bring it, that sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Right, right. And, um, the cost of the out of districts probably wouldn't reach catastrophic aid, but the partner program, it would reach catastrophic aid. So, we probably could get catastrophic aid for our students that are in the partner program, which would be in a reembark, would, would come the next year.
Does anybody need any more information?
Actually, I would like to add, though, that if that hallway doesn't, that twenty-six thousand where we were gonna do the activities hallway does not happen, the only classroom would be the one that we opened up for the extra teacher, which, right now, doesn't look like we'll need it, but we're looking at the third grade thinking, mm.
I do too. I already saw it, yeah.
High numbers in third grade.
We may have to go hire somebody all over again.
So, they're, they're almost a, a duo, so if you want to also put that in, that would go into Joe's budget.
All right, dominoes here.
There are dominoes.
It's all dominoes.
My concern with, with using the modular is that we've had in the past having to have the kids come out of there because of air quality control ongoing, so we need to consider that as part of our problem.
And I, but that, that's happened a number of years.
Is it the modular or is it the hallway that you're using for the cubbies?
Four, five years ago.
Teachers anywhere, use that for the cubbies.
We have not had an issue with air quality out there in the modules since we had to remediate that, that building.
But it can't happen again.
It certainly can't.
I'm just putting, I'm just putting it out there.
Certainly can't get happening.
You know, I think it's a great program, but I think we also need to have contingencies in place of what happens. And, and not at the spur of the moment, we need to have a plan in place.
I'm, I'm set to go, is everybody else? It's gonna save us money in more money, is that what everybody gets? Ultimately, it might have a first-year investment, but ultimately, it, and we, we would be doing a good job for the children that, and which-
For all the kids.
By, for all the kids, everybody, and it's a law that we educate everyone.
And you're right, we'll point out that if she gets the catastrophic aid the next year and not sending kids out of district, it's a, it's a win-win.
And I don't, I don't feel like I need to sell it. I, it's pretty clear to me that you guys feel like it's a good program, but the other piece to realize is that it's an act, it's another special ed teacher.
Yes, I heard, I got that, that was-
So, you're, it's giving your, currently our spec, we have two of our special ed teachers who have a background in behavior management, a, a better background, that are not really able to comply with their IEPs because they're being called to deal with these other students. So, it's an additional teacher.
All right, so, do we take a vote on this or does it, do we?
We're gonna do all of the eleven hundred first and then we're going to, you're gonna tell me what you wanna add.
Oh, okay.
And you're also gonna tell me if you want the twenty-six hun, twenty-six thousand added to Joe's budget at the same time. Marie, did you get a bottom line?
We both agree.
Oh, you guys are great.
The new budget amount for that line for the regular ed would be five million, four seventy-six, eight seventy-six. A difference of, um, what was from prior year to now, eight hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and sixteen. And the difference between, let me know if I'm going too fast, and the difference between what was on this sheet here, the four ninety, oh seventeen, and the eight twelve, nine, sixteen, is three hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Because of the things we just added?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the staff and the books and the substitutes all equal to the additional three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, and three hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Should I ask you what was the difference from the original amount or?
Well, that's, that's it.
Eight twelve.
No, I meant the original sheet, which it had, we added curriculum and we took out a half of the curriculum coach. It's all right, I'll-
Well, we, we, we calculated the half of curriculum coach.
Okay.
We take the whole then, we did exactly what was, what was indicated.
Okay, no, no problem, yep.
So, we've added an additional three hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight ninety-nine to the eight hundred and sixty-six thousand on the budget at the, the bottom line of this budget, too. In other words, if you go to the last page and it says our budget is up eight eight two four nine six, it's now going to be up eight eight two four nine six plus three two two eight nine nine.
Wait, I thought that we were adding it to the budget that had no extras.
Right, this is the budget from last night, so it, none of this was in that budget last night and we were still up eight eight two four nine six. Okay, now we're gonna be up another eight, uh, three two two eight nine nine. I'm just gonna see what percent we're at.
One, one two oh five, three ninety-five, thirty-seven.
Okay.
What's the percent on the increase?
One, two, something, twelve percent. Was it twelve, twelve percent, twelve and a half percent, you said, Kim? I don't think she did.
She gave us a total. What's the total? What, what's the total?
One point two million, one two oh five, three ninety-five, point thirty-seven.
One one four five, three ninety-five. Enter.
You're adding only three ninety-nine to that, five nine three one two.
Three twenty-two eight ninety-nine.
You're right, you're right.
So, the, the bottom line number as of right now is ten million, three seventy-nine, eight fifteen, 'cause you only increased it by the three hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars.
I'm saying what the difference was.
Right. Right, we didn't add eight hundred, we added three hundred, if that's right. Yes, okay.
And the percent on-
I'm sorry to confuse people.
No, 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 it's good. And the percent, um, increase over the nine one, thirteen percent?
So, we're still on the fifteen that-
Thirteen point fourteen.
That you, that's on the back of-
Thank you, thank you, ladies. Please, can you approve the eleven hundreds to be going to the, um, budget committee, Mr.?
Jerry, you want to put that?
Claire said she has an extra. I don't have that. You said you have an extra, sure.
I usually have like nine with me.
I'm not right, this number is, we're not over, this is just to keep track, like that monthly report.
Just to keep track.
All right.
Okay. Okay, so she wants somebody to approve, move to approve that.
To approve the eleven hundreds to be reviewed by the budget committee.
Did somebody write the numbers down?
Yep.
Okay, do you wanna make the motion?
Nope. Yeah. So, it's the five number, right? So, I've moved to, what?
Accept.
To, to present the five million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollar budget for the eleven hundreds to the budget committee.
Perfect.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't leave it hanging.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we're now going to move to the twelve hundreds. Now, you're going to ask, tell us to put it in as sixty-eight thousand dollars. We're gonna do it on a single line to New England-
Who is, who is, um, Center for Children?
New England Center for Children. It would be, I already checked with Marie, she is going to put that in as a contracted service on a three two oh. So, that will be added to our bottom line.
What was, I'm sorry.
We are going to add to the twelve hundreds-
Yep.
Under twelve hundred, five three two oh, a line for New England, sorry.
Center for Children.
Center for Children.
Number-
Sixty-eight thousand.
Sixty-eight thousand?
Yes.
Five three two oh, that looks like teachers' retirement.
Is it contracted services high school?
Five three two oh. Five three two oh.
Didn't go far enough.
It does look like teacher retirement, that's not right.
No, I went to five two.
That's five two.
Five three-
She's gonna have to add a line. Five three two oh, contracted services, but it won't be preschool. It'll be contracted services for, um, so she's gonna add a line.
Okay.
For, um, the New England Center for Children.
Okay, I'm just gonna say we're gonna add the program partners in the twelve hundreds, sixty-eight thousand.
Yep.
Is that all right?
Yep.
All right, everybody, I'm gonna make a motion that we add the sixty-eight thousand dollars to the function twelve hundred, special ed, for sixty-eight thousand dollars, the partners program. Do I have a second? You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
While we're in this function, would you like to add the twenty-six thousand for the hallway renovation for, this would go into twenty-six ten? Joe's, is it twenty-six ten or twenty-seven ten?
Sure.
That one.
Um, I'm-
I sat down.
Twenty-six ten.
That one.
Uh, twenty-six ten.
All right, um-
Operations maintenance.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to add the renovation of the activities hallway to accommodate the partners program of twenty-six thousand dollars to the twenty-six ten function operations maintenance line. Any of the second? Oh, wait, what, Marie?
I'm just wondering if we should put it with the special projects line.
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
I'm just asking if that would be so that it's actually showing, because right now we have money in that, have eighteen thousand dollars in special projects and then we add this twenty-six thousand to that eighteen.
Okay, to do. Yep. Okay, so, I'm going to amend my motion to say that, uh, I would like to move that we add twenty-six thousand dollars for the activities hallway to create space for the partners program in the special projects line of operations and maintenance. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
All righty.
Okay, go line by line through the special ed. Honestly, I'm probably just gonna be reading the notes at the end, so if you have a question, Anne is here to expound if those notes aren't enough. Okay. We're looking at a student services coordinator salary on that first, line twenty-eight. This was half in the IDEA grant and could not fit anymore. Anne tries to put a line of the new, um, opportunities and people into the grant in IDEA. They're not supposed to stay there more than-
Three years.
Three years. I think she's been in a little longer, no?
No, actually, she's only been in for two years, but we want her to, um, be able to-
Yeah, that's a command.
Evaluate and supervise and she can't, positions in the grant can't evaluate or supervise.
Perfect. So, half of this was already in the grant, I mean, I'm sorry, in the operating budget and half was in the grant. It is now wholly in there. So, although it's sitting on a line by itself, it, the note is correct, it's no longer half in the grant. And then the next line goes down.
Yeah.
Okay? Because she was half in the grant. And there was a change in who was actually budgeted on these lines, so now we are correctly budgeted for the student services coordinator to be on their own line and for the special ed teacher salaries to be correct for her in that line.
Do you wanna go get a glass of water?
I'm sorry, I can't drink out of the water, Mom.
No, don't.
No, it's not gonna get any better. Let's look at this. We drive you crazy, I can get out and all of-
No, no, it's okay, I'm worried, I just worried about you. Yeah, okay, all right, sorry.
Can I just say that, um, in the job description will be written and get to probably with the next coordinating, that's the reason we're calling our student service coordinators, we're really asking this position to, um, to drive the, um-
Data.
Data. And looking at all of our kids and helping with the intervention model, helping us identify who, what kids need to be in tier, tier one.
Tier one.
Tier one, tier two, and tier three, and then the, um, evaluation and supervision. So, she's, this position will have larger responsibilities.
She also continues to be the liaison for Spalding High School kids.
Yes.
And goes to those meetings as the LEA. When we get to special ed support salaries, on that line, there are twenty-two paras, which is actually one down from last year. And fifty percent of the guidance slash special ed secretary. And fifty percent of the guidance slash special ed secretary, so we have one person who, um, spends their time between guidance and, um, special education. Okay? Summer school salaries is the next line, it's based on the anticipated. Um, Anne is really good at coming up with the number of what she expects the E S Y is going to be, um, and felt that, um, this was, uh, comfortable for what we expect to have happen. The next one is special ed substitutes. We can't often find enough to cover, um, but we would, particularly if we had the partners program, be looking at substitutes for special ed teachers. ABA tutors, um, this is an increase of two ABA tutors over last year, and, um, five total, but one of those five is in the grant. Okay, so you're really seeing four, an increase of two, we really have five, but one's in the grant.
And this is because of the additional students?
Yes.
We had two unanticipated ABA tutors.
Okay.
The student tutoring services, this is actually for a high school student, it's a special reading program. Uh, substitutes for support staff, um, Anne has shared that she's more apt to have a substitute for a support staff person, because when that person is not there, that child has no one that is supporting them, um, so we let that flat in the grant. On the next page, um, this is healthcare, you're going to see three notes, health for the student service coordinator, health for the teachers, and health for support. Oh, I thought this was where the large, um, Marie, I was wrong, I thought this is where the other chunk of the, um, health was over budget this year.
No, you'll, you'll see it further.
We'll see it further down, thank you. And then you're going to see the same thing, dental for teacher, dental for support, dental for student services coordinator. These are all actuals, um, for the staff that we currently have, you're going to see FICA for teachers, FICA support, FICA for the student services coordinator. One of the things we found in going over these budgets is they are not, there's no that here. It's all, uh, health, uh, salaries and benefits for the most part. You're also going to see retirement for the students cor, uh, student services coordinator, support, um, and retirement for teachers. The reason that the line, uh, what line number is that?
Fifty-nine.
Sixty is down is because it's now in line fifty-nine. Okay, um, the next one is contracted services for preschool.
It's a little confusing, you want me to explain?
Yes, please.
So, last year, um, so we had a speech and language pathologist that worked three days a week in the preschool. Last year, we, um, changed that position, and she, that person is now pre-K through, so we have two full-time speech and language pathologists, so it's all in the elementary special ed contracted service line. So it says decrease in preschool, but it's an increase in the elementary line, which is right below. So the only, um, special ed contracted service we have right now that's only for, um, preschool is occupational therapy. And I am looking at, um, thinking about that a little differently, but I'm budgeting enough so that if we can't look at the model I'm thinking, which is potentially hiring our own occupational therapist, that we have enough to cover a contracted service. So it's, I'm keeping it in the contracted service line for now.
So there is contracted services for preschool, but, um, there's a decrease because some of that was moved to
To.
Pre-K eight.
Yes.
Okay, and then the next line reflects the increase in the contracted services pre-K eight, um, and that is a line which is a budget driver, but the whole function of special ed, um, I consider a budget driver. So, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars more, um, from, uh, contracted services to provide for our special ed students.
I mean, these are all non-negotiable items.
They are.
Non-negotiable, but that, um, line in particular, long range, you'll see go down with the partner program, because we, um, partner program does a consult model with, where the, um, related service providers, um, work with the child one time a week with the ABA tutor, and then the ABA tutor does it throughout the, um, school, the school week, so allowing it to generalize, and that's a model, the consultation model for related services is a good model to look at in general. So by doing it through the partner program, it's a good start for us to look at. So that's the line I think you would, um, I, I would anticipate would be getting less and less each budget year.
Um, the next one, um, again, is for, uh, services at the high school from a V C B A. Again, non, not negotiable, it's required, okay? In the next line for testing, they, uh, there's a small addition there for the addition of testing protocols. Moving on, uh, preschool. The, um, there's a decrease in the, um, Stratford Learning Center membership, a significant increase in the Stratford Learning membership, so that, that is reflected on line sixty-nine.
Back to the high school contracted service, if I can just say the V C B A that we have at the high school currently is only, um, consulting on one student, and will be consulting next year on two students for the same amount of hours that she's currently consulting for.
Medicaid fees are based on what we will actually be, it's actually flat, but that's what we expect to be paying, um, for the Medicaid billing that we get done. Uh, the next one is special ed tuition to public. I have a note, Anne, I'm going to need your help on
Yep. Line seventy-two as well. So that's special ed services, the billing of, um, Spalding students, and it's also, um, we provide services to a student at charter school.
Okay, we're moving down to tuition private elementary, that is one elementary tuition that is budgeted for next year. Middle, we currently have none, so that's been zeroed out. High school, we have three.
No, we actually have five.
Five.
Looking at, um, two transitioning next, this.
But that's the right number, so we have to change the note on that, to say five. Thanks. Special ed travel is travel to out-of-district, uh, meetings, this would be, for instance, uh, I E P meeting at Spalding, or out-of, uh, out-of-district placement, because we're required to go to those two, they are our students, so, and someone who can act as an LEA would be traveling to those. Preschool supplies, decrease in the anticipated need. Special ed supplies, increase in the anticipated need.
Just because in the special ed, we just, um, combined middle and elementary together.
Yeah.
To one line.
And middle is now on line eighty-one. Special ed books was a request by a teacher so that they could have a set of, uh, a set of books that were actually being used in the classroom, that they could use on their own. Uh, special ed is now on, middle school books are on line eighty-three. Special ed software is Edmark, AZ Reading, Ace Curriculum, several others. And the next line. This is a possible student need, we can't be specific at this point, um, but it is, uh, possible student need that we may have for sped new equipment. Same with sped other equipment, it is a student-specific need. So again, it, when you look at this budget, it is essentially all what, what you have called Tracy fixed cost, and it will definitely be in that, that line for the, um, for the budget drivers and the fixed cost drivers. So I think the only thing we added then is the sixty-eight thousand dollars.
So, to backtrack to what Dr. Tyree had said about the health insurance, that it wasn't just the eleven hundreds that were affected. If you look at the special ed lines, um, the twelve hundred line, four thirty-nine, forty-one, and forty-two.
I think I saw.
That's an additional sixty thousand dollars.
Yep.
So you, um, you had seventy and sixty, so it's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Again, they go in the fixed line.
That was that error.
Right.
That overlooked, okay.
That is not.
That's more than that error.
Well, it's not just the error, it's also changes in staff, what they had.
Right, that's true.
But it's, it's part of that, it's, it's all included.
Changes in staff, but it's.
Where we currently are with staff.
Right, changes in staff, but insurance actually went down.
That's correct.
Six and a half percent.
Correct.
So, changes in staff and the error from the previous year.
And not budgeting for the four.
Not budgeting correctly. What, do we do ten percent? We were off by ten percent, or, since it went down six and a half, and we still?
Well, because we had to, uh, address the
Yeah, the four.
Reconciliation part, and then people had qualifying events that came along that, different plans.
Okay. Again, fixed. We don't need to vote.
The new line is two hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven?
No.
No?
Okay, the twelve hundred line
Oops.
Is two million, two hundred and forty thousand, one oh eight. And I, I think I verified that with Kim, so we're correct. The, um, the difference is two hundred eighty-one thousand, oh fifty-eight.
Oh fifty-eight?
Oh fifty-eight.
Thank you.
And the difference from where we were to now is sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
And the percent that that is going up, wait, I'm going to try.
I have fourteen point three-five percent, so if you have.
For that, for the twelve hundreds? I have it going up, um, fourteen point three-five percent.
Yeah, fourteen point three-five percent.
Thank you, fourteen point three-five. Okay.
Could you give me that number just one more time?
Which one?
The difference?
The difference is sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Thank you.
And the percentage of that, of twelve hundred is fourteen.
Okay. When we're looking at, uh, co-curricular, um, the reason that we keep the fourteen hundred even though there's nothing in it anymore is for historical purposes. So if you want to look over time, you're going to have to look in one area for everything consolidated and then everything broken out.
So if you're next year, that's going to be, yeah, hopefully we'll all move over.
So that didn't go dollar for dollar, right?
I'm sorry?
It didn't move dollar for dollar, if you look at fourteen-ten and fourteen-thirty.
No, because they were broken out to fourteen-ten, fourteen-twenty, and fourteen-thirty.
Okay.
So you would have to sum up all three and then compare it. But if we look at the fourteen-ten, the co-curricular, uh, salaries are the increase to make it equal to the C B A appendix B. And you've seen that number before, at least some of you. Support staff salaries, um, this is actually where the after-school program is. Marie, are you okay with support staff, I might, that may not be the right line for that?
Well, we're just, we're calling it support.
We're calling it support staff, but that is specifically, no, I'm, I'm good with it. Uh, specifically for the after-school program, okay? Uh, and then FICA, which covers both the lines, two oh-two and two oh-three, retirement that covers both the lines, two oh-two and two oh-three. Also budgeted on, um, the, the line for retirement. Contracted services, special events, this Camp Calumet.
So did we fix that?
To increase that.
Okay, so we need to fix Camp Calumet. How much will we enter?
Um, I'm thinking, Jerry, do you remember what the invoice was, it was thirteen and change, I think, I think we would be it'd be okay if we put fourteen in for next year?
I think so, that should.
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah, fifteen. Is it possible that that won't, if you actually come up with an actual number, that we can add it in?
We won't know, because we won't get the invoice for Camp Calumet until next year, but we know that this year it went up to over thirteen thousand.
So went up over a thousand dollars?
Yeah.
So fifteen.
So fifteen is a, a realistic number, um.
Obviously, if you don't use it, it goes back.
It's, it's very little.
It'll, it'll also depend on how many kids.
Right.
It's a, it's a head count.
Okay.
We need to wait for our ladies here, but we'll keep going and tell them that we up that line.
Okay.
Um, co-curricular supplies, uh, this, uh, is flat, but necessary, because people who do these activities, um, need materials. Do you see these numbers?
Hold on, one second, question. Anybody, everybody happy with that number, or does anybody want to see an increase? This is, um, co-curricular supplies, co-curricular supplies, after-school supplies is currently at thirteen fifty. Does everybody want it, no increase?
It's good.
It's fine?
It's fine.
Alright, just wanted to make sure we were, we were scattered.
We're leaving it flat?
It's okay.
Yep.
Are we good?
Yep.
Okay, um, we're going to add, um, Marie, we're, and Kim, we're going to add, uh, Camp Calumet, bring it up to fifteen thousand.
Okay.
It was under.
We're, we're changing it from twelve, nine, eight, oh, to fifteen?
This year it's currently over thirteen, so we're anticipating for next year.
Yes. Let's go through all the fourteen hundreds and then we'll come back and, um, adopt them, okay? Actually, that's probably not right, um, we should have a bottom line number for, um, the fourteen-ten before we move forward.
You ready?
Yeah.
Do you have it?
Thank you.
Making that change?
Yes.
It's forty-one thousand, six ninety-one.
Forty-one thousand, six ninety-one.
A difference of fifteen, four twenty-three.
Uh-huh. That's okay, I can do the last one. I can put it in, right?
Can anybody tell that we're on li, on page three? It's really little.
I'm getting, uh,
It's printed at three oh-nine.
This can't be right.
Alright, I have a difference, um, you tell me if you're right, if I'm right, two thousand, nineteen, uh, nineteen dollars and ninety cents. Because the original number was thirty-nine, thirty-nine, six seventy-one.
Mm-hmm.
And by increasing it to fifteen thousand, it's a difference of two, two thousand, nineteen dollars and ninety cents. Is that right, Chris?
How'd you come up with, um, an uneven number?
I stopped doing it.
What?
How, it, they're all numbers without.
Uh, so it's twenty, I, I, it's just because it's twenty, so it's, it's two thousand.
Two thousand twenty?
It's just rounding, it's rounding up.
Okay, I think it was like fifteen thousand and.
I got three thousand twenty.
Three thousand twenty.
Two thousand twenty.
Two thousand twenty.
If you take fifteen, twelve thousand, nine eighty from fifteen thousand.
Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen is true.
I forgot to change my five to a four.
That's good, well, I'm glad everybody's checking, I mean, it's, it's good.
Who wrote down the numbers, Sandy, we know you did, want to make?
You want me to say it again?
Yep.
Okay, so the new, the new amount proposed is forty-one thousand, six ninety-one.
That's all I needed.
The difference is fifteen thousand, four twenty-three, and the change is two thousand, twenty dollars.
While we have those numbers, we probably should make a motion to be going on. The same one you did before, Jen, but do you remember what you said?
Make a motion to present the number forty-one thousand, six hundred ninety-one to the Budget Committee for, um, account fourteen-ten.
Beautiful.
A second though.
All in favor?
Aye.
Athletics, uh, actually, um, Jerry, you gave us this budget, and it was based on, um, your consultation with, um, the, uh, Mr. Boynton.
Yeah, so if you're looking, you know, you got FICA and you have retirement, which are something we really can't control, um, and increase in umpire unrest, more games, uh, bench with shipping, uh, we don't have a bench out there for our, um, for soccer, for our visitors, so it'd be a nice thing to give them someplace to sit rather than on the grass, uh, I think it'd be a good sportsman-like thing to do. Uh, and if you look at the last line on there, no athletic dues or fees were requested.
So you're not in need of uniforms or anything, because they, right?
I don't know.
Well, you see, you're, I'm, I'm, you look at your supplies, that's in there as well, uh, but I'm saying the addition here is the bench.
The addition is?
The addition is the bench.
Okay, so you're already counting for some uniforms?
Correct, it's, it's an increase of eighteen hundred, eighteen hundred ninety-one dollars is the increase, uh, and that is, that is the bench.
Joe, would you like to consult on the, uh, you know, the purchase of uniforms next year? I heard that.
Well, they just, you know, they need to look, uh, a little spintier, wouldn't hurt, you know?
Don't want to look like a ragtag.
Take some names, they need to look good doing it, right?
We should actually have a cycle for, um, replenishing uniforms every X years in a particular area.
Probably send them looking after next year, we've been adding, you know, now for, like, four years, we've had the soccer team, maybe five.
So I don't think we're adding anything here.
You're going to need to say how long.
You can make that motion again.
Yep. I would like to motion that we present eleven thousand, two hundred and eight dollars to the Budget Committee for approval for fourteen-twenty athletics.
A second. Move it, all in favor?
Aye.
We're with it now.
The fourteen-thirty, um, is a summer school salary, um, it is, is not E S Y, although, um, extended school year, which would be under special ed, um, and it, because we just went over that in your budget, and it is not, um, the Title I either, would, because that's covered in a grant. This year it was used to cover some overage in, um, special ed, but what this is, is a regular summer school that Mr. Gregwire would decide, um, was necessary if we had some students that needed to make up some work during the summer.
Do you always have someone?
We always have people who should, um, but we don't have people who will.
Oh, what happens to them, do they stay back?
They do not.
Then why would you?
Well, you know, again, that's sometimes I, it's an encouragement for parents to, you know, enforce that their kids need to, uh, pick up their skills.
So if there is no change up or down on that, we're going to move it?
Yep. Yep. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-one-ten is where the truant officer is and where we are going to put the SRO if you're supporting that position.
Can I stop for one second? Do you want them to vote on the summer school?
We did. It passed. Thank you, though.
Sorry, I'm...
Aren't we slick?
You know what? You know, I'm looking ahead and trying to get a jump on things and maybe snooze, and I don't know.
Twenty-one-ten would be where the SRO would go if you were going to put it into the budget. We had originally maybe suggested it go on a warrant article, but the chief has told us it's in his budget, it is supported, and we would not want to take the risk that the voters would vote no, and then we would not be able to have one.
Okay. How much is, how much are we sticking?
Um, I think on here it says eighty. That's high, but I think that we don't know quite what our seventy-five percent is. I tried to check it today and see if I could figure out what the chief put in his budget for the SRO, but he's stuck on a line with some other things that I don't know. But that is comfortable if you want to use that number.
All right. I'll make a motion and then open for discussion. I make a motion that we accept the eighty thousand dollar SRO in the twenty-one-ten line.
You need eighty dollars in there though, don't you?
Eighty thousand dollars. I didn't say it.
You don't need the other, the truant officers?
No, I was just talking about adding the SRO. I wasn't doing the whole thing. And then Tony seconded. Open for discussion. I'm okay with it. I wouldn't turn it down. Any input?
The faster the better.
I agree.
This January first half is really making me angry.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's going to go in as contracted service because we're actually reimbursing the Police Department for the salary and benefits.
So do you want the new number?
Yep.
Yes.
Just letting you know that we're ready.
We're ready.
So the new number is eighty-four thousand three oh-six. The new budget. The difference is eighty thousand dollars. And the difference from the four three oh-six is eighty thousand dollars.
I know, I was looking for the percent. I was wondering if it was going to be what?
Oh, it's a lot.
Eight thousand?
No, it's eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred percent, yeah.
Because of the...
Yes, of course. No, obviously. That's a lot. First thing. Okay. And you're on a roll, sorry.
Wait, did you roll? You guys are on a roll. We're going to go to guidance, social work, again.
I'm sorry, can we, we need, we do actually need to vote on this line, so...
You have to vote.
Jen, you're on...
I'm sorry.
You know, if your voice is hard, I...
What's the word again? I...
I move.
I move, thank you.
Sandy said, right, Sandy, I move.
I move to submit the amount of eighty-four thousand three hundred and six dollars for account number twenty-one-ten, truant officer.
Beautiful. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now.
I'm sorry. Before we start these, again, Jerry spends a lot of time getting information from his staff. So when you're looking at these numbers, Jerry, I think everything that the staff requested are in here for guidance and social and the nurse. For guidance and the nurse. Correct? So we can go line by line.
You may not have to, I'll ask the board.
You go right ahead.
Everybody sees that basically it's increased, the whole thing is only increased by two thousand dollars. Do you want to do it line by line?
It went down.
It went down.
I'm sorry, it went down by two thousand dollars. Do we need to go through this line by line? Sandy? Nope. Okay.
Only question I had, yeah, I'm sorry. Was that there was another one, and I was doing this at home earlier. There was like a secretary that went down fifty percent because it was getting shared with guidance, and I never saw that go up in guidance. Is it there?
It went up in sped.
So it went up in sped and down in guidance?
No, it's half and half in each one. And you're seeing it on line one-twenty-three, the support staff salary. That's half the salary.
Okay. All righty then.
And they're in flat because we didn't put increases in for any salaries.
Okay.
Yes, Don, it was a change in personnel.
I'm sorry, it is a change in personnel.
Did you have anything you wanted to say, Jerry?
No, this is a...
This is it?
It's not all fat on this one.
Okay. Nothing to add?
Nothing to add.
Have to move it.
I move that we present one hundred seventy thousand nine hundred ninety-six...
Oh, one sixty-eight.
Nope, sorry, next line. I move, I'm moving over. I move that we present one hundred sixty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to the Budget Committee for approval for twenty-one-twenty guidance, social worker.
Beautiful. Awesome. All in favor?
Aye. You moving on?
The nurse, we included the LNA this year because it is a child-specific need. However, we believe that as this young, as this person moves through our grades, that that person will not be needed a hundred percent of the time. It was really the adjustment. So we're finding that we can use the person who is there for student need when they can to help out our school nurse.
That is fantastic.
Yes, so remember, that was a suggestion by the nurse, and we believe that as time goes on and everybody starts to feel more comfortable with this person, that receiving the specific services, that more and more time can be spent helping out our...
We're actually going to just give it a try this...
We are, yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Yes, it's very...
That is one busy office.
I was going to say, I was here one day with three ambulances, so that was...
That was a standout day.
Right. You remember it well, do you?
I remember most of them.
Right, that was scary. Glad they were all fine.
Any questions on, again, these are all of the nurse requests?
You know, what you're seeing here is typical supplies, but then you're also looking at audio media, the audio meter calibration, having a couple times a year for hearing tests, audioscopes that are used, you know, she's using her own right now to looking kids' ears and, you know, up their nose and things of that nature, so we're making sure we cover that. Epipens?
I can ask about that.
Crazy expensive and very, very difficult to find right now. She and I talked on Monday about one other source that we hope will be something we'll be able to utilize. But again...
Is the cost going to go up because there's so supply demand?
I couldn't tell you that that hasn't been presented to me.
Okay.
But just that internationally, there's a shortage.
Right.
Now, do kids bring in their own epipens if they have?
They do, but in the event that we have something happen where somebody, an adult is here or a kid has a reaction that they don't have their own pen for, we have adult pens as well as child pens.
And she doesn't have one of them, she's like...
Yeah, it's a shortage. But that's pretty much the nurse.
Okay.
Right. Good.
It's pretty much fixed. I realize we've changed it, but we have to, good.
I move that we present ninety-seven thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars to the Budget Committee for the twenty-one-thirty nurse account.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
For twenty-one-fifty speech, we just budgeted all of that in special ed rather than on a separate line, which historically has been on a separate line, but there isn't any reason to keep it there. Twenty-two-ten, professional development. When you look back at whatever that first column is, the actuals from seven-one to six-thirty, I remember that when we cut this this year, I said the reason that we could reduce the workshops and tuition was that I would supplement that with Title II. And in fact, I am supplementing it with Title II. So what I'm going to suggest is that we actually do increase these lines and go back up to what it was before. Based on actuals.
Well, they have to. I mean, that was a big question mark for me.
So they should go back up too?
It was...
Sixty in total. It was sixty in total.
Yeah, I think, I think we, but we spent sixty-three previously, so I don't see that changing unless you want it on your budget for some reason.
Sixty-five.
No.
Yeah.
We don't.
Okay. I don't expect that to change, so... The top line should be forty-five.
The situation should be forty-five?
Forty-five, and workshop stays the same at twenty.
And workshop stays at twenty for a total of sixty-five thousand dollars? I'm just, I'm just making sure that I got the right number.
I mean, it's an increase of like eighteen hundred dollars over last year. Eighteen hundred.
Increase?
Yes.
No, it was forty-eight to sixty-five is more than eighteen.
Oh, she was talking about that one year they spent sixty-three.
Oh, 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 sorry. My mistake.
Actually, it was mine. I see what you're saying. But, okay. I didn't realize that. Okay, but yes. Are we doing new numbers? Are we ready?
So the new number is sixty-five thousand dollars. A difference of seventeen thousand dollars. And that's the difference between forty-eight and sixty-five, seventeen thousand dollars. Are you, does that, you agree with that?
I agree.
Want to move it?
We need to move that one here.
She's got, why don't you go for it?
I move to accept the sixty-five thousand dollars in two twenty-two-ten to be forwarded on to the Budget Committee.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
So on the library, the media specialist, you're going to see the salary. It was miscalculated the wrong way, so we corrected it to her correct step. And she is two change, two track changes. One track change? Somebody's got a track change.
I would like, I motion that we extend our meetings.
Oh, right, I meant to do that. Did you? Did somebody second it?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jerry jinxed us.
Thank you. Following your policy, I appreciate that.
I still have a minute five of.
As you look at that, we, I am waiting for you to ask a question that I have asked Jerry today. On what is... I'm going to see if you pick it up. I said, Jerry, they're going to ask this question. Got to know what it is.
I will be answered that question.
We're on page, I can't read at five. And if you look, it says based on current personality, increase in rate, increase in rate, actuals, actuals, tumbleweed, blah, blah, blah. I'll tell you where it is. They're going to ask Jerry, what is an Accu-Cut die?
Oh, you know, I did, I, yes, I actually saw that, right.
Because I have no clue.
I bet Sandy knows what the Accu-Cut die is, right?
No.
You don't?
You know, if you go in the back room over here, the machine that cuts paper into certain shapes and might cut a star, might cut a leaf, and might... Shamrock, whatever it is, and there are dyes that go along with that that have to be replaced periodically.
So even though it's in the library, everybody would be using that, Jerry, just like the laminator and...
Just like the laminators for everybody. It just houses it in the library, that's what we account for.
Again, I don't think there was anything that was asked for that isn't in here. And Nicole does both the library and the tech.
And a lot of this is, is a lot of eBooks, access to online publications. So again, more digital literacy.
We're ready on that? I don't know.
We're all good?
Wait, so we're still on the library?
My husband didn't want me to come.
So I have a question.
I told him he wanted him not to come.
Can you clarify?
I'd call mine too.
Can you clarify the staff member's salary again? I'm not clear.
I was questioning when we looked at this why it was reduced. And it must be an error in how it was budgeted before because we know for a fact that she is an MA eighteen, Step twelve, and that is what the salary that is budgeted is at.
I just want to clarify, I just want to confirm that, okay?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because, just give me a second?
Sure.
That salary that you see there, fifty-six thousand seven eighty-eight, is not an MA eighteen.
Did I?
It's an M, it's a Master twelve. Because we've not...
Did I have it wrong? I had the note wrong. I see Kim nodding her head. So I need to change the note to Master twelve.
So I do need to change that, so that number's going to change. Are you, I mean, is it supposed to be an MA eighteen?
No, no, she's telling me I have the wrong...
No, I'm telling you that right now she's not, but she submitted a track change last year for this year's budget to put her at an MA eighteen. That's why what you see in FY two thousand nineteen is higher, because whatever we put at twenty is...
Well, we put it in twenties where she is now.
Where she is now, not where she's supposed to be.
Because we hadn't had her track changed back up until today.
So the fifty-six seventy-six is wrong.
So I'm going to change that. Is that okay? That's what I'm asking.
Absolute, yeah.
Let me change the track. Sorry. I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
No, I'm glad you picked it up. So I had the right note, but the wrong salary.
And then I'm going to have to add... Oh, we're going to give it on the slide from this year, right?
Yes.
Because she gave us a note. I didn't, I wasn't, I wasn't clear on that. So...
I thought I had it right, and I don't. So I have the note right, but not the salary.
Things just happened today. It just happened today. So thank you for clarification on that. So the new number is, because she is changing the track, which was not reflected on here, is fifty-eight one sixty-two.
Fifty-eight one sixty-two. Thank you. And that includes the track change?
That's the track change.
Thank you.
And see, and the fifty-nine thousand dollars, it included the track change, but she's getting it this year. So because it's, because it's...
Got it.
You have, you're on the salary schedule, and then because you move the track, you get a thousand dollars. That's why it's fifty-nine one sixty-two. But she's going to get the track change, she's going to get the thousand dollars by then this year.
So for next year, it isn't in there?
It is exactly what it is.
Great. Then it's a lot more sense on that line. So we're going to then have a change.
So we may lose our short, our small little decrease. Should be bad.
Yes, we may.
But... Nevertheless, see if anybody has any questions. Right, guys? Is that okay? I'll just ask everybody if you have questions, and if we don't, we move forward.
Yeah.
We still have to do the Warren articles tonight. We can't, we can't, we, we...
I'm just kidding.
I, I, that's what was coming at me, so I just said, don't, but we'll, there's only five, there's only five. Matt's gonna have to pull a four-year-old up out of there.
So, it's fif, it's what I said, fifty-eight, one sixty-two.
So, we're gonna have a new bottom line when these...
So, you want me to tell you what the new number is?
Yes, please.
I'm just gonna, I'm just checking with Kim.
Yep, that's okay.
Let me know when you're ready, now.
I'm ready.
Okay, the, um, the bottom line number is one fifteen, four thirty-one. For a difference of eight hundred and nine dollars.
Up.
Up.
Uh, nah, okay.
I don't show them. I'll show one fifteen, oh seventy-five. You changed the salary, fifty-eight, one sixty-two?
Yep.
So, that, just give us a sec. Go right ahead. The, uh, two people are working here because we need to get this budget out to the Budget Committee tomorrow. So, um, Marie is gonna be putting it in ADS, our financial software, and Kim is going to change the... Yeah, so, if they're both on these, Kim is gonna change the Excel one, and they're actually gonna get the Excel one. But when we run the annual report, it'll come out of ADS, so they'll match.
Okay.
So... And, and they're, God sends both of them to do that, um, so that, uh, we can get this out tomorrow.
Thanks, so that, we agree?
Excellent. Um, so, we didn't, yeah.
Nope, well, we don't know the numbers yet.
Oh, okay, so, the, the new budget amount is one fifteen, four thirty-one, with a change of eight hundred and nine dollars. Increase.
Okay.
Um, to present, I know, one hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars with, uh, how do you say that? Line two-two-two-zero.
Actually, just, yes, or, um, function.
Function two-two.
Function, two-two-two.
Two-zero, zero.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, school board. I'm gonna ask them. I was just wondering where we were putting it on.
I have questions. Do we overspend already on the legal services line this year?
No, but we're close.
Okay, but is it an odd year because of the negotiations? So, it should just remain that way, or?
Usually, that is enough.
Okay.
Um, in fact, um, yeah. Usually, it's more than enough, but we will be over this year.
Oh, no, it's gonna go into our fifty-seven thousand.
You, your salaries haven't been increased in how long? We don't know, cause this is only our second year here, and this is only your first year. Um, but I bet you it's been a while.
Did you want it?
So, those are flat.
Right, I was gonna say, I don't remember, you, I know all of us said no.
Right.
We don't want it to take anything away from, from the school.
Can we go down in legal services, since we're not gonna be in negotiations next year?
Well, we're over already.
You never know what's gonna crop up, and, um, it certainly, based on usage, looks a little bit high, right? But, um, this is an area where if you have one, uh, issue, if we had had to, let's say, go to the State Board for some reason and had to have an attorney with us, because, let's say, somebody made a complaint or something like that, that can go up very, very, very fast for them to represent us in that kind of a hearing. So, you can, but, um, you have a little bit of a risk there. You can lower it, but you have a little bit of a risk.
We're, we're not adding a lot of fluff. I'd hate to come up short.
I was thinking, actually, this, along the same lines of the feasibility.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um... I don't have, I don't have any further.
Is that?
You done?
No, no.
He needs to scratch.
I think we might go a little long under the stretch.
You said, scratch.
He reses.
Do, uh, do we have any questions? Other than the feasibility, it's really only changed by four...
I'm taking out the, uh, line one seventy-two, that three thousand for the School Board Secretary.
Oh, yes, we are, okay.
And why do we, uh, why do the, uh... Okay, get my breathing gear here. Background checks, why do they go into School Board?
I was gonna ask you that, cause you're lucky.
No, 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 we want our thing to be really low. Seems like an awkward place to put it.
Marie, it's just where most people put it.
Cause we don't get to see 'em.
No, you don't.
I don't get to see 'em either.
No, just lucky me. I actually attended PD to learn how to do that better when I look at them.
I'd go through that. Are they for us or for people we hire, hires?
New hires, yeah.
Okay.
And ultimately, the School Board's responsible.
Okay, so that's why it's under here, okay.
It's ever, the whole budget should be under School Board.
It is, but this is...
Um, we split up the ballot printing and the district reports, um, the, um, board dues for NH School, uh, the School Board Association does include the free PD. And the reason that the miscellaneous goes up is we didn't have a line last year to charge the five hundred dollar scholarship. Don't know where they got it in the past, so we put it on that line.
Right.
No questions?
We do need to change the numbers.
Right.
That's right.
Ninety-four thousand, seven...
Ninety-four, seven, thirty.
Taking out three.
Taking out one, taking out three thousand for the secretary.
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize that. And that's also gonna change the FICA.
Yes.
Oh, so I have a new number.
What's the FICA?
I'm screwed up.
I'm gonna be able to check the sick and the cough drops, you know, you need to begin with the sick. I don't have two numbers.
Okay, so, um, if I have six seventy-five, who puts, well, the, it says Secretary FICA, but it also includes, um, the moderator, the treasurer, and the, and the treasurer.
Six seventy-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just gonna change that to School Board, FICA, the blank.
Okay.
That's correct, and the system, right, cause that's what I have.
Okay. So, let me know when you're ready for the new number. Um, the new budget number is ninety-four thousand, hundred. A difference of forty-eight thousand, three hundred and ten, and I have to calculate the difference. A difference of, for the change from what was originally, um, from what was originally stated of ninety-seven, seven thirty, the change is three thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars.
Got it. Am I all good?
I move to accept ninety-four thousand, five hundred dollars in twenty-three-ten function to be forwarded to the Budget Committee for approval.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, twenty-three-twenty is SAU administrative expenses. Salaries went in flat. The health insurance, there was a decrease in rates. Dental, there was an increase in rates. Uh, on the next line, we added SAU employee life insurance. Um, we inherited a contract for an administrator, um, that had life insurance in it from SAU sixty-four, but it was never purchased. So, we added it, uh, in there for, um, SAU administration. Um, FICA is based on actuals, decrease in the rate, oh, well, teacher employee, uh, teacher retirement went up to, I believe, it's seventeen point eight. Employee retirement went down. So, um, if you're an employee, you actually saw a decrease in that rate. For us. So, that's why it says decrease in rate for employees. Background checks got moved, they used to be here. I would allow the captain. And conferences and courses, all of it had been budgeted under, um, the, um, office, the administration, um, life office, the superintendent. And there was nothing in the fiscal services when they got split. So, we moved eighteen seventy-five to the fiscal services so that there was conference and money in there as well. Um, so that reduced that line. Um, professional development for the SAU staff was put in. There are times when there are trainings on certain things that they might be using for part of their job, where we would like them to have the opportunity to go. Two thousand is a copier maintenance agreement, we do have a copier of the SAU. Uh, thirty-one hundred is the copier lease. Uh, use of additional advertising resources is why our advertising is up. We now do Indeed on a regular basis. We're thinking about doing school spring for certain prep, uh, positions. We use the local paper. Before, we used to just do Ed jobs. So, now, based on who we're looking for, and because the unemployment rate in New Hampshire is so low, we, um, try to go where we think we should be going. Okay? Uh, uh, the tuition other, um, this is the Gaffney Library request. You're okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Um, travel, it's decreased based on use. We rarely have people, um, in, that comprise this function to take travel. I know I don't usually unless it's a grant. Supplies and forms, this flat, software, oh, I don't have what it is, I was supposed to look that up. Do you know what the software is that we're budgeting to?
ADS.
Thank you.
It's the cloud and, and the cloud.
Thank you.
And the, um...
I was looking today, I couldn't find it. There is one replacement computer, um, we are trying to get it on a cycle, uh, for the computers to replace them in the SAU. Uh, dues and fees are flat.
So, that would, she's a question.
I had a question. Um, why is there nothing in the auditor, uh, line? Has that been moved?
It's now in the twenty-five-ten.
Okay.
Things were changed when they...
When they split the SAU.
Okay.
Oh, this, what was in the software line? I'm sorry.
You told me it was ADS.
That's the renewals for, um, that's renewal for Adobe and, um, Microsoft products.
Renewal for Adobe, I knew, yes, now that you say that, you're right. I remember. That's renewal for Adobe, that's okay. And Microsoft, that, that rings bells. I could not think of it today. And you said that before. So, we'll add that note. Anything else?
No, so we didn't change a thing, did we?
No, but just have to move it.
Yep, does anybody wanna make a move?
I move to accept two hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars in twenty-three-twenty function line to be forwarded to the Budget Committee for approval.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Office of the Principal, twenty-four-ten, um, Principal salary is year, uh, is budgeted as year three of three in that contract. The Assistant Principal, um, is at seventy thousand. The next one is a change in personnel. Uh, your office staff, Holly's been there a year, but...
Uh, Holly, this is Holly's second year, Jen's first year.
Second year and Jen's first year. Um, so this reflects those changes in personnel. Uh, we have support health, again, due to a change in personnel. We have dental, where there was an increase in rates. This is mostly salary and benefits, as you can see. This is, uh, Principal Support Dental, increase in rates, Principal FICA, Support Retirement, decrease in employee rates. So, these are all actuals for the people that are actually employed in the Office of the Principal. That is the Principal, the Assistant, and two Support Staff. Principal Tuition, this is contractual, this is what is in the, the budget, although, um, it hasn't always been used in the past.
It also has been used, Chris, when we had to send somebody, with like, when Mr. Lampron came in, we needed him to get up to speed on Power School.
Yeah, you're right.
And so, we took that money there, as we also had done with other staff who needed to go to Power School.
You have, when, certainly, um, when we're looking at the line and somebody says, do you have, yeah, you could support others besides yourself.
Exactly, if we have to, yeah, absolutely.
And I know you have. Um, Professional Development is flat, although, way back when, it was eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one. You must've gone to Aruba.
I don't know where that came from.
But, um...
One heck, one heck of a workshop.
One heck of a workshop. Uh, Repairs and Maintenance, I'm sorry, I don't have a note for this.
Repairs and Maintenance?
Yeah. Um, Maria, I don't think you do either.
The repairs and maintenance is flat.
Right, but I, I...
You talked about it, Jerry, in that book that you had.
I know we did.
I don't have, I don't play repairs and maintenance, maybe it's that...
It's okay.
Is that the copiers?
It's okay.
It's the usage of the copy machine.
It's the copier, it's the copier maintenance.
Copier usage.
So, is that a different one than the thirty-one hundred dollar one up above? We spent...
That's the lease, thirty-one.
We lease copiers?
And then, but, and then we pay another forty-five hundred?
Yes, for the actual paper, each page that you print, there's a cents per page.
That's a scam.
Well, paper and ink, paper and ink.
Well, not, not, not paper. Not, not paper.
Per page, it's a charge per page that you print. I don't mean paper. Per page that you print is a charge. And it's different from a color to black and white.
Seventy-six hundred dollars for...
If we can't change it, if we can't change it, we have to budget it, but I would love to take a look at that.
Oh, we will.
Okay? That's exorbitant.
Jiminy Christmas.
Postage, uh, pretty flat on that. Any kind of printing that we have to do, um, out of my office, not, that wouldn't come off our copy.
There's another one down here.
Yeah, you just said that.
So, many of your lines were flat, Jerry, that they never got little notes on the side.
Right, and they jumped down to the, you know, Principal Software, uh, and that's the Power School, that's also the addition of the online registration. And of that online registration, the thirty-one, you know, through one hundred and fifty dollar increase, but sixteen hundred of that is a one-time fee. It's a fifteen hundred dollar fee after that, but it's a sixteen hundred dollar one-time setup and, uh, setup fee and training fee.
Principal dues, graduation expenses. Jerry, was that enough last year for graduation?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah? I thought it was more.
We either buy, you know, there are, uh, books that we'll buy as, as gifts and plaques and things of that nature, but it's...
Seems like as long you didn't copy the diplomas off of a copy machine, you're probably all right.
That would've driven the cost right up there.
No, I just, I don't, I remember that we, we're looking for more.
I'd have to look at actuals, but I don't recall that.
It's okay, um, we'll manage. So, no changes, except to add some notes.
Maybe we can be, look at that, does anybody still watch it?
All right, go for it.
I move to accept three hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars in the twenty-four-ten function to be forwarded to the Budget Committee for their approval.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. I just wanted to point out, Jerry, with the last three numbers.
Six, 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 that's how that is.
I would've added a dollar somewhere.
The last three numbers of what?
Six, six, six.
Oh, mine?
Check his, check his scalp.
My son prints six on six, six, oh, six.
Oh, cool.
Yep.
Fiscal services?
All right, fiscal services.
Um, so, again, uh, there are, there are notes, but not on all of the lines. Um, we are looking at Business Administrator salary going in flat, um, Support Staff salaries. This is a change in days to bring the two support people to full-time. They, uh, we now have, uh, for the Business Office, we have the Business Administrator, we have two full-time people now for next year, and half, sixty percent of Kathleen.
And part of, part of Kathleen is because she was grant-funded, and so the majority of that increase is based on the grant-funded position that was, um, through the grant, which is no longer applicable. So, we're absorbing it in the operating...
Um, when we get down to contingency, and you see a dollar in a TBD, that's where, if you're going to put in an amount for unaffiliated, that's where it goes.
I thought we missed it, okay.
No, you didn't miss it. Um, and you, uh, got a ways back, a sheet that had all of the salaries, and what, three percent on all of those salaries would be, three and a half and four. That doesn't mean that everybody gets the across-the-board increase, it means that in the spring, um, based on evaluations and coming to the board for the ranges that you wanna see agree with, uh, increased salaries.
So, it's putting in three percent of the gross amount of the unaffiliated salaries, and then divvied up at our discretion in the spring?
At our, uh, our recommendation and your final decision in the spring.
I like it the way I said it, but...
I don't.
Yeah, but you're not voting.
All right, but we don't know what that number is.
Add levity.
Okay, but we, but we don't know what the number is anymore, cause I don't have...
Oh. Page one oh five in the board packet.
All right.
Thanks for listening.
The committee recommended School Board salaries.
This is a labor of love. Isn't it, Tracy?
We've had, we've, we've had a good time, it's been a...
This is like a...
I don't know if a good time, that's not, that's not maybe accurate, but...
My daughter referred to you as my girlfriend tonight.
Did you guys find it?
Yes, I have it, one oh five. So, um, oh, I see what you're doing here. We can take that one out, because...
Oh, yeah, we can take it out, we just go with the thirty-one one.
Because this was for something else, doesn't it?
No, that's what it was, yeah.
You what, turn around? This one, you can look at this one if you want.
In the budgets.
Go with the thirty-one one.
She, I'm, she, I know, I know, I just...
So, the three percent that we're putting in is thirty-one, one forty-two.
Is that what you're putting in?
Yes.
Does that include...
Well, I don't think we voted on it.
Wait a minute, can I ask you something? Does that include everything?
Yes.
It's right off this sheet that you guys gave us.
Okay. So, you, are you, is that the exact amount, can I, or should we round it to, can I round it to thirty-one, one forty-three? Is that okay?
We'll start to vote on it, right?
We'll add that nine cents when we vote.
Um, okay, just...
Explain to me again how this works, so, we, we put it in now.
Right.
And that's the maximum amount.
Correct.
We don't, we can give anything up to that amount, or not over, divided based on...
Performance, goals, evaluations.
Do you remember? Do you remember, can I, without any names, can I explain this piece where we put it in operating, but we could pull it out of here?
No, this is operating.
Okay, all right, I'll leave it alone. Yeah, thirty-one one forty-three, okay. Somebody want to, got it, Sandy?
I just want to ask a question. Why is all the contingencies listed under Fiscal Services and not in the cap, in the function areas that they-
Because we don't know who's, where it's going at this point, so it's just a holding, it's just a holding point. And then, once it gets distributed, it'll be dispersed where it's appropriate. If that's okay with the Board.
Yeah, I mean, there's areas where actually, yes, we need discretion.
We'll just, yes, because we'll, we'll, we'll adjust it after the fact.
Somebody want to make a move, a motion?
Wait a bit, we have to run on.
Is there any other changes in this, is there any other changes in the twenty-five-ten function? If not, I could give you what the bottom line under this.
Go for it.
Wait, do we?
Okay, can-
Do we need to vote on the raises separately?
I'm looking for you to confirm.
Does that not listed in there?
No, just the, we don't know who it's going to be to, so.
Ready?
But don't we have to have it in the budget?
Yeah.
She's doing it right now, she's giving us the numbers.
Yeah, she's giving us the bottom line, literally the bottom of the raises.
Thank you, you're welcome. Just bringing you up to speed, Sandy.
Are we ready?
Okay, the bottom line is two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars, a change of fifty-seven thousand, five thirty-two. And the difference, just give me a second. Is it thirty, is it thirty-one, one forty-two?
One forty-three, right.
One forty-three.
One forty-three.
So then it's-
Then it should be two sixty-eight, two oh one.
Oh, because I had a dollar in there before.
Yeah, you had a dollar in there before.
Is it five, fifty-seven, five thirty-two? Okay.
Yes. It's, it's, actually, it's fifty-seven, five thirty-three, because I had the dollar in there before.
Five thirty-three, that's what I meant, so it's fifty-seven, five thirty-three.
And it's a change, and it's a change of-
Okay.
Yeah. Of the, yeah.
Okay, no, no problem.
I moved to accept two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars, in the twenty-five-ten function to-
Two hundred and one dollars.
Is it?
Two hundred and one dollars. Right, two hundred and one dollars?
Two hundred, twenty-six, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and one dollars, in the twenty-five-ten, ten function to be forwarded to the Budget Committee for their approval.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't see here. Now on Joe's budget, Operation and Maintenance, we have already added twenty-six thousand to the Special Projects line, which is line-
Two sixty-nine.
I'm looking, Joe, two sixty-nine.
Never doubt, honey. You don't have to speak, don't you do? You're accurate, hi.
I'm not finding two six, help me out here. Thank you. Two sixty-nine, Maintenance, Special Project.
Duh, thank you.
So we're going to increase that by twenty-six thousand.
Yep.
You've heard Joe's budget before. We've gone over this one, and we've gone over what is in all of his lines. Does anybody still have questions?
No, forget it real quick.
So that line is going to change to forty-four thousand.
Yes.
Eighteen and twenty-five is forty-four.
Eighteen and twenty-six.
Eighteen and twenty-six is forty-four.
I'm just going to say this salary.
Wait. Yes, we're going to raise the salary on two fifty, thank you for reminding me.
I'm going to give them the number.
Wait, we have one more change in Operation and Maintenance. On line two fifty-five, Facilities Manager salary, the number is going up to fifty-five thousand. And that's going to do FICA and everything on top of that.
It's going to do, yeah, I'm going to, you want the new number? Because I'm going to put it in, and it's going to formulate the whole thing.
Yeah, yes, but let's ask if there's anything else before we get the new number.
When I add it to this, it's going to change to eighteen thousand.
I know.
It's twenty-six plus.
Just a second.
So she's at forty-four.
So that's fifty-four.
Oh, we're in year three of three, there's no removal.
Yay.
So, we could have messed with that then.
No, next year is year three of three, so you're going to be able to bid it out for the following year. Although, Jerry swears by them and says that they're pretty much the only game in town.
I still think it's a really good thing for detention, because-
Yeah, no kidding. Any other budgets do you see? I know you've gone over his budget, so anything there?
I don't have any, I really don't have any highlights or questions.
We're just waiting for- He had much more than I did in the notes section. He had one in the ADS budget that comes out of ADS. He had every single solitary contracted service to, like, the dollar.
It's tight.
Are you ready?
No, I think actually, yes, I'm ready.
Jen, you were talking about things that we have no control over, the inspections that we have to do every year mandated.
Oh, I was just looking at the, the tree cutting and landscaping.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, you know.
Those are, those are big contracts.
I traded that in for some textbooks.
They're fixed for this, for our-
They are, unfortunately, but, but again, I told them, Jerry, that you always speak well, that they do a great job. And then-
Oh, is that the same? Is landscaping the same as the people who shovel the-
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
They do-
And, you know, they've always come, we don't get a lot of bids, and they're always a little bitter.
So.
I mean, it's, it's not like-
I didn't realize it was, that was attached.
So we're waiting on the numbers, there's no more changes, I guess?
Okay, the budget amount, proposed budget's five eighty-seven, nine twenty. A change of one hundred and thirteen thousand, one seventy-three. And the difference be-
I thought we only had-
Thirty-one thousand.
Twenty-six and five.
But you had Spike of Retirement, that was-
Yeah, but still twenty-six and five.
It's thirty-one thousand, how do we go up to one hundred and thirteen thousand?
Yeah.
Because we, we went up eighty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight to begin with.
I thought, we went up from, from here before. Oh, adding the eighty-one.
So, yes, from what we originally, what he proposed originally, that we had. So, from what you had before, it only went up thirty thou, thirty-one thousand, seven oh four.
Thirty-one thousand, seven oh four, okay.
Seven oh four, seven oh five. It went up thirty-one thousand, seven oh five.
Uh huh, yeah, that makes sense, okay.
Which is the twenty-six and the five and the five and the five.
Can you give me the big number again, the total?
Five eighty-seven, nine twenty.
Five eighty-seven, nine twenty is the total, which is really all we need. Five eighty-seven, nine twenty. And it went up thirty-one, seven oh five, and I don't know what this one is.
Oh, it, it was added to the eighty-one, so one thirteen, one seventy-three.
One thirteen, one seventy-three.
I just tried to key, so I need to call my husband.
I'm usually pretty good at one, that one missed me, the eighty-one, where was the eighty-one? All right, I'm going to get, we get to do a nice big old X right here.
Well, nobody moved that though.
I know, we, I'm waiting for, would somebody like to make a motion, Sandy? Ready?
I moved to accept five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars, in the twenty-six-ten function area to be forwarded to the Budget Committee for their consideration.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
When we go through the Student Transportation, you have also had Brennan here that, going over these budgets. She's done an incredibly thorough job, and there's nothing in here that is in any way, shape, or form extra, because this is really, really based on actuals.
And nothing has changed since that last-
Then nothing has changed since you saw her, since she came the first time.
I have a question on that, sorry. Kim brought it up to my attention. Joe had asked to move, when, when he did his presentation, he took, moved two of his positions that are not currently full-time to full-time.
Oh, did I notice?
And we didn't, and we didn't find out, and Kim brought it to my attention.
Thank you so much.
She also didn't include the library aid, bringing that to a full-time position.
So, on this sheet that I gave you, okay, there were things that we needed to go back to. We took care of Nursing Services, in a sense, on the backside of that sheet, because the request for the Nursing Assistant will become more and more a reality. But we didn't do the library aid to full-time.
Okay.
So we're going to have to-
Yeah, go back to twenty-two.
Want to go back to library first? Okay. If we could go back to library first, we need a motion to reconsider by the prevailing side.
What number is that?
There's all of them. I make a motion to reconsider the library-
Function.
Function, aid to full-time.
So she's currently by four point eight.
Anybody know what function number?
It's two-two-two-oh.
Yes, I'm taking a read this.
So she's going to be-
Okay, page five.
Seven, seven, six and a half or seven hours a day, Jerry.
Seven, I believe you did it.
Two-seven.
And we still have her in for two hundred and eighty days.
Highly known this is necessary.
We have her in for two hundred and eighty days.
Nicole does both tech and library. And it is, she's doing the work of two IAs. So in order to, she does actually two IAs, one on tech and one on library.
So at separate times, right?
At separate times, but when she's doing the tech, there needs to be somebody in the library. And because she's doing two IAs, she needs a little bit of extra help in helping kids when they come into the library. And the person that we have is actually in a program for Library of Science.
Yeah, I talked about it.
Yeah. Yeah, she's good.
All right, so it's line one fifty-two, Library Support Salary, that we're looking to change to full-time?
Yes.
All right.
All right, you have to give me a second.
Sure.
I'm sorry about that. Just, because I just want to make sure I have all the rest of stuff.
I know, if we want to get out, we need to slow down. Back down to a normal pace, because we're missing stuff, and-
I know, that's not good.
If I have to do it right, take a while, and do it wrong.
Okay.
All right. Currently, she's six hours a day, four days a week.
Well, yeah, well, the way, the way, yeah, okay.
That's where she's at.
So it's now just going to seven hours a week, right? And that's-
Seven hours.
A day, I mean, seven hours.
Seven hours a day, five days a week.
I just, just be patient, I'm sorry.
And the reason that it kicks in Health, Dental, Retirement, FICA.
The cat getting to make a batch of cheese. Get a little bit of everything.
It's this one. So we're only one behind.
Yeah, no, that's it, we're really not that, we're not that bad.
Not that bad.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm good.
I'm slacking.
It's because you don't eat.
You need a steak.
A steak and a glass of wine would go a long way.
I also do intermittent fasting, so I won't eat now until breakfast. It makes me feel clear-headed.
Three forty-five.
For about an hour. Let me get a head in.
Yeah, that alarm that goes off.
Is he home after?
I never was there. I don't know. Yeah, no, he was there. I don't care.
I told Kate to stay home for Caroline's, because she's going to be icy. She won't, she'll be afraid. Is that a good home? I never had that bad of a time. At this point, there's no need. Nope, can't see her numbers.
Great, I was home every morning.
But I really hope I'm trying to cut sugar out. Are you doing, Amy, keeping it down?
Just to assign manifest while we're waiting.
Are those these right here?
Are you guys anything I say you tomorrow?
Yeah, we're only working till noon though. There's another storm coming in. Yeah, it's the signatures, you're in that purple folder, thank you. There's storm coming in tomorrow afternoon again.
Sandy, did you look at that? Is there?
Yeah, she didn't know.
In detail?
I tried.
Sandy, did you look at the checks in detail, the manifests? Did you do this in detail, or?
I looked at each one.
Oh, I just, because I read that nobody could come in earlier.
I'm trusting you, Sandy.
I came at three fifteen, and then I signed the manifest, and she said I wanted to be here.
Yeah, we're going to do that.
There's a body notice. No, you looked at them, that was fine.
Right, no, I just thought I was sitting here. I know Jen wants to stay, but you know.
What?
I said, oh, I could sign the manifest, and then we're laughing, and she said, well, yeah, because we don't want to stay any longer. I go, no, Jen wants to stay.
No, I'm tired at this point. I've been up since four-thirty.
Yeah. My husband's going back down to pick up his daughter one more day, and we'll be there at six in York.
Wood and Shovel.
York's not far. New York, New York.
Well, he has to be there at six though.
I videotaped this here.
We could have probably, no, it's really a issue.
Should ask her about it.
Oh, wonderful, that's a great one.
Case, are you ready, ready?
No. Yeah, wait, 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 hurry up. I even signed my name wrong, look at that.
She's nearby, right?
Okay, we are in two-two-two.
What, two-two-two, library.
Go ahead.
All right, so the new number is one thirty-two, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. A difference of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three. And the difference between what was there before, the difference of the one thirteen, one hundred and thirteen thousand, six seventy-nine, is eighteen thousand, six sixty-six.
Six fifty-six.
I'm not doing it. You guys can write it down.
One thirty-two, three forty-five. Difference is seventeen thousand, seven twenty-three.
Sandy, whenever you're ready.
I moved to accept one hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars, and twenty-two-twenty function to be moved to, forwarded to the Budget Committee for approval.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the next one is actually in Joe's budget now, so we can go back to Joe's budget?
Okay, so, where? Forty-six to ten, the two of us, three signatures.
That's enough, thank you. We're good, thank you.
Forty-six, ten is on page seven.
I'm going to line two five four.
I assume we're in Joe's budget, and we are going to consider increasing the day custodian to full-time year-round.
So there's two of them. One of them is currently at six hours a day, and we're going to increase that to eight hours a day? I mean, oh, yeah, eight hours a day. I'm sorry, I'm getting-
No, that's okay.
And then the other person is part-time, four hours a day, and Joe talked about making that also eight hours a day. So we have four full-time employees.
We will have four full-time if we just move the person who's part-time to full. Correct?
Does somebody wanna make a motion for discussion?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion for discussion.
To discuss the, the, increase the day custodian...
Oh, increase day custodian to full time year round.
Right, it's, it's not correct because we have three now. We have, I can name them. We have a half that's starting days. All he wants to do is bring that half up to full time and have four. But the half's already in there, right?
Right.
The starting days, so we just need a half added.
Well, we got the person who's there for six hours, he also...
Wait, could every, just one second, we need a second.
A second. Thank you.
So we have a second, all right, go ahead. Sorry.
He also has a person there currently at six hours and he wanted to make that person eight hours as well.
Your word correct.
Didn't we just do a raise because he covers the custodians?
Right, but not their hours.
He's been asking for custodians since we've been here.
I know, but didn't we just increase the 10% raise because he was covering those hours?
You were talking more about the hours of the daytime custodian that wasn't there. And now you're talking about bringing up the people that are part-time to full time.
No, to unrelated, he just got it.
No? He was the, what was it, the king of barf or something?
I didn't say that. You call him big Joe.
No, I mean, he can't, he, these are, these are things he's been asking for, for months.
What you were talking about was one that was gonna go out basically.
Correct.
I'm not, I'm talking with the raise he gave.
I know.
In relation to...
That...
Let me understand, did she ask me a question? All right, you guys are good with it, no?
I argued to hold back.
Well, I know, but one of the, one of the rationale...
Because he can't do this.
You can argue to hold back, but one of the reasons that it was easy to do was because there was a lot, a certain amount of coverage involved.
I, I was... No, I, I don't think, that may have been one of the reasons why the rationale was there. But I, he has been asking for this for a long time. There, I, I don't see them as related at all. I mean, I know that's why he has been doing it and has stepped up to the plate and shows up every time you turn around. And if there's a need in the future, he'll be there. But it still doesn't mean, but right now, he's not functioning well running the school.
I wouldn't consider them related.
That's right. Do you have, you got, you got me?
Okay. Who wants to make a motion?
Okay, so you're ready, like, I gotta give you the number, right?
Nope. Well, first, we're gonna make a motion and...
Okay, sorry.
Oh, we did make a motion.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Are we ready? Or you're not?
Yes, we're ready.
Okay, so the proposed budget is 617,870. The change is 143,123. And the difference that was, that from the 556 to 15 is 61,655.
Whenever you're ready, Sandy.
I move to accept 617,870 dollars and the 2610 function to be forwarded to the budget committee for their consideration.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have student transportation coming in next and then we have one last function and we will be done. So again, these were already presented at a previous meeting. The notes are pretty self-explanatory. It's largely, you know, drivers and retirement and salary and benefits and cleaning and materials and the like. Most of that is in regular student transportation. The others are a little bit sparsely generally, only have drivers and benefits.
Well, obviously, they're all down. The differences.
I do have a question about the rail transportation for fuel. Looks like it stayed, stayed the same.
I can't help, oh, the fuel?
Yeah.
If you remember, Brennan actually plotted six months' worth of fuel and then doubled it and said that that was a reasonable number to have in the budget.
And she's down 17,000, so it's...
Insurance were down $8,000?
Oh, it's because it is now all budgeted.
In the 2900 line. I mean, in the, it's all, it's all property, it's under the 2610 line.
Right.
Before, for some reason, it is split between different function codes.
Thank you, thank you for putting them where they belong.
You're welcome.
Sure. I move to accept 420,359 dollars and the 2721 function to be forwarded to the budget committee for approval.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Want to serve changes to any of the others? You ask any additional questions on any of those lines?
Where are we looking at? Line 329.
Special Ed 2722, I think is the next one, right?
320.
No, I'm in the wrong spot.
No, you're right, 329, the number line, I gave you the, the code, the function, but Chris was right, it's 2722.
You had a question on 329?
Page nine. Again, down quite a bit, of 25,000. Does anyone wanna make that?
She, oh, sorry. We were at the affiliated pool.
Is she in?
Yes.
She is.
I move to accept 110,589 dollars and the 2722 function to be forwarded to the budget committee for their approval.
One second.
All in favor?
Okay.
All right. Want to go do athletics? Do you wanna do athletic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay.
It's just salary and benefits. And there's some increase because of the additional baseball, softball, and soccer.
It's a good thing.
It's a great thing.
You wanna make a motion?
Sure. I move to accept 3,229 dollars and the 2724 function to be forwarded to the budget committee for their approval.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the co-curricular, which is the field trip transportation, Brennan actually plotted or logged all of the field trips that occurred from January to June, which is when they all occur, most of them. And that is based on the actual number that will continue the trips that they're taking now.
Any questions?
I do. Okay, it's the same, never mind.
Yep.
I move to accept 4,629 dollars and the 2725 function to be forwarded to the budget committee for their approval.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So our last one is technology, the 2820s. And there is a, a position that was actually on the last one on the sheet from the staffing considerations. But it actually is already in here, I'm seeing on that top line. The way we got this number was we spoke to the person who gives us support currently and asked him for an estimate of if we could have him on-site for one day a week. This is the number that he gave back to us for one day a week. I use that number, but I believe that we could actually find someone, I actually happen to know someone who does this as an LLC, who could probably give us at least two days a week and could help us with the governance plan. So is that enough money to get somebody for two days a week in a governance plan? It might be tight for two, but based it on the number that we were going to go to with, with the person that we have now. They told us, I think Sandy, you were with me at the 1612. They told us that we should estimate 20,000 for a district our size to help us through that plan, to do all of the pieces. So then I thought, well, that's kind of reasonable, maybe we could just make it. It's a number, I'm hoping that that is going to get us what we need in order to guide the governance plan. But also give us more onsite addressing the issues that we have for the person who's coming right now. And start those technology portfolios that we need K8 so that our students can move on to an accelerated technology course at Spalding. So part of high school requirements for graduation is one course in tech. But if you complete a tech portfolio, you can actually take an advanced course rather than a, an introductory course.
This is for the position that is mandatory going forward in June. For the governance.
It's a position that help, that we need to help us actually write the plan and start doing the plan and doing all that background work. This is for one day, I believe we can get someone, I think I know someone who will jolt for more than that. You can see I'm hedging my bets because I don't know if we have enough in there. And we'd love to have a person for more than two days a week to help us out with tech support. To be sort of the liaison, to mainstay and to take care of all of those daily pieces that we need to get taken care of, plus do the governance, plus help us with the K8 portfolios. So I, I'm hedging my bets. I would like to see three days a week and maybe if we increase that by a day and it's 48, that might be a more reasonable number to get somebody here to do all that stuff.
And you have no one now?
I know someone who might be interested, but we don't have anybody now. No. You know, the former system principal used to pick up a lot of the slack. And, and I, he, well, he wasn't here when I was here, but I remember him being a techie. Because I met him and when we lost him...
We'd be contract right now with somebody who does a great job, but then only here one day every two weeks for a short amount of time.
Yeah.
And what does that cost us?
Isn't he that very, very expensive guy?
I'm sorry.
What does that cost us now? The one every two?
A hundred and...
Very expensive.
What does he get in? A hundred and two dollars an hour?
You've seen his bills.
Oh, I know, I've seen his bills, but I just wondered what it was costing us on a yearly basis to have him come in. I know he travels, travels.
It's pretty consistent, though. He usually does about four hours every two weeks.
And again, stellar work, outstanding job.
Is it all year round?
No, just during the, during the school, if I need him during the summer with Nicole, but by and large, it's just during the school year.
I also looked up tech support on Indeed. And for an entry level position, this was about the salary, it was in the mid to high 30s for an entry level position for just tech support. And that was full-time. So really hard for me to...
This is on a part, this is a part-time basis, this 32,000. So if we were to hire them through the school district, it's gonna be full-time, we'd have to add benefits to it.
Yes, you're right.
Unless you go through contracted services and you end up paying the hourly rate.
I don't think anybody's talking full-time. I mean, we're going from one day every two weeks, I don't think we're talking full-time.
No, but she just said to increase it, if you think as you're increasing it, you have to be conscious about where the cutoff of benefits.
But Jen, you're also talking about, you know, immediate governance plan needs as well as having the tech support, which we don't even know. And that's, not even quite sure what that's gonna look like yet.
Right, so we don't wanna jump into...
And I'm not saying we need to go to full-time, just there's a reason why there's more, more time needed.
I, I don't know how to figure out what we're looking for because they can go from somebody who just is doing, you know, basics to somebody who can do something like this. But I couldn't really find a salary for, against the governance plan. So I'm going on with Sandy, they told us, which is about 20,000. I was lost, but...
It's like nailing Joe to a wall.
Is the, I wish I could remember his name, I just keep calling him the expensive guy.
You don't wanna say his name now.
Okay, that's good. So is, is that, are those repairs still embedded in here? Like...
That's what we, that was, that's what this position would entail, be filling that role.
Correct.
As well as the governance.
She wonders where it's showing in the existing...
Oh, sorry.
Numbers, right?
Well, it would be here if it was, so this is that position for one day a week rather than four hours every other two weeks.
Right, but aren't you looking to see where he's showing up in the existing budget so we know where the study to is?
Which is if it's not, it could be. Where does he usually come in, in technology repair? Where did we budget, did we budget for him or did you just not budget for him at all?
Well, he has to be in this...
Included in the contracted service.
Right. So he is here. So there's a little cushion there in case we're under-budgeted.
Okay.
In 2018, we spent 18,000 dollars.
Right.
In 2018, so far this year, we've spent 3,000.
Right, so...
He's on the repair and maintenance line, this would be in addition to that.
So that would be in, this would be in addition. If we're short and if we don't use it, then goes, obviously goes back, so...
All right. Cool. So on those lines then would be tech support for the governance plans, some daily IT needs, FICA off of that. The contract for mainstay went up slightly for extra hours. Repair and maintenance is the person who comes right now. Software is for the website and alert now. Supplies, USB and chargers. Here is where the student computers are. We're looking at one grade level, 50 new Chromebooks. So that's 50 Chromebooks at $300 a Chromebook.
I thought we were getting them for less than that.
We can find them for less than that.
Yeah, I know that you can walk in the Best Buy and get that lower version for about 170. But I was told Chromebooks, you don't get warranties with them because they're crap when they, when they die, they die, right?
You don't repair them.
Repair them, okay.
You may have a warranty, but you're not gonna repair them.
All right. So you walk in the Best Buy and buy them for about 170, 180 dollars.
What did we budget for?
We budgeted for one grade level of 50 computers, Chromebooks.
It's gonna be about 200 dollars a piece.
300 dollars a piece.
Does seem kinda high.
Actually, Anna's one has been looking for these and says she couldn't find them. For less than?
No, they were a little over 300.
I'm sorry.
High-end one? It's like the high-end.
All the software.
Maintenance agreement, not maintenance agreement, but the...
Warranty.
Warranty, right.
Best time to get them is 4th of July, because I got one for 220 with a warranty.
I need to draw your attention to, you know, line 343, where it says website. It's actually school messenger, not alert now, we colored it, I mean, it's, it's a pretty common term we use for, you know, the phone blast, but it's just school messenger, which is also our website.
I do have a, okay, I'm sorry.
I bet you do, go ahead, you go for it.
Well, no, I don't wanna leave the topic, I was going on to something else.
Me too.
Oh, oh, what happened to Mock's dog?
Oh, it's, it's on that line. The website and school messenger.
Okay, that's what got me, but that is who that is?
That is who we would be possibly using.
But we've left enough money.
Yes, we have.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
I'm going to field two here, the 10 staff laptops?
Yeah.
Are those specifically, are those already? I know that we have a certain section of employees that are looking for access to more computers, are they included in that by any chance?
No, those are replacements for the 10 oldest ones on our replacement list, yes.
We're coming up on year, year seven of those, when we started replacing them, years, yes, we're year seven, we start it next school year.
And we looked at something like an HP NV to cuss them out.
Are we thinking that we need to get a couple more to meet the needs of the people that I'm... How's that going for you?
That haven't been being used.
The three haven't been being used?
And two of them are here. I was wrong, they're not all in the...
No, the Chromebooks are in the special ed office and can be signed out to be used wherever the person wants to use them. And then there's a desktop that currently is in the modular and I have told Dr. Tyree that, tell me where. They would like to have them and I'll put them where they would like to be.
So you've got them to be signed out and they haven't been signed out? And how long have you had them?
Since the first week in October.
I guess I won't worry too much about that then. I put it in perspective.
And I have communicated to try to determine what, what the reason is that they're not being used.
Okay. I am, anyway, Jen wants to. All right, anybody, any more questions? Jen? No more questions?
No.
Okay. And somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
To present a hundred, is it a hundred and forty-three?
Forty-three.
Yeah, we didn't change anything, right?
Nope.
Hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars in function twenty-eight, twenty-two. The.
Budget committee.
Thank you. I'm like totally losing my thought.
Second?
I second.
Neither one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We do have to do the twenty-nine hundred because they are in the operating budget and those are based on Primex information for the staff that we have for disability, unemployment, wellness incentive, FICA and workers comp. You want to ask about wellness incentive, FICA? It is when our teachers get.
Everybody.
Everybody who signs up for some of the fitness activities get small incentives and we actually have to pay the FICA on that, it's considered salary.
But of course you do.
Well, it's fixed.
Then thank you, Marie, because you're the one that explained it to me.
Okay. Any questions? We noticed it went down, that was a good thing.
Unless our teachers are partaking of the fitness. We want them healthy.
All right. Any more discussion? Motion?
I move to accept forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars in the twenty-nine hundred function area due forward to the budget committee for approval.
Good night, Jen.
Any seconds?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So you have a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. The next one, the five-two-two-one, it's, you'll recollect because the school lunch prices were not changed in the spring when we were still part of SAU sixty-four. This was required that we transfer this particular amount to food service. Would we have anything in here for next year, Marie?
Well, that's, well, I kept it flat.
Yeah.
Because hopefully things have changed in the process.
Did the price go up?
It did go up, but we still have to make, we still have to make it whole. And we already had, if you look at the budget that for this year, because the prices are still not adequate, the state requires us to already transfer money to ensure that we're going to move forward to increase the prices ongoing. So this is to cover some of the deficit.
And they need a bad debt?
It's part of that bad debt as well.
Yeah, that agrees with me.
So we do have to move that.
Do you know how much of its bad debt, off the top of your head?
Well, hopefully, I don't know, because every, last year was a phenomenon because the food service contract wasn't signed until the end of the year. So we had to cover a big chunk of the food service program last year. So we really don't have anything that we can to gauge as a new district.
Well, as I asked, was how much of last year's money was bad debt? I mean, like aging, anything, it must have been an A dollar amount that kids had negative balances. At some point, if you run across it, I'd like to know that.
Sandy, want to make a motion?
Can I just? Again, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, make a motion.
Okay.
I move to accept fourteen thousand dollars in the five, fifty-two, twenty-one function due forward to the budget committee for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have to do the bottom line, because you have to adopt that as well.
Yep. What did you think we were running?
It looked like you were leaving. I looked like you were leaving.
Betty drop out of the ceiling?
Please, no, I don't want to not have budgets that they can review.
You brought it, that was good for you.
I did for a while and then I just.
Ready?
Okay, so the new proposed budget is currently ten million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand oh seventy-one. And Kim will give you the difference with the percentage.
One million, four hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Could you repeat that again, please?
Sixteen point fourteen percent difference.
How much?
Sixteen point four percent difference.
I think it is. Yeah, would you just mind repeating that?
One million, four hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and fifty-one.
Six hundred and fifty-one?
Thirty-seven cents.
And thirty, and thirty-seven cents.
And the total was, Marie, was that ten million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand oh seventy-one?
Ten million, six-five-five oh seventy-one.
Gee, how much is that is per thousand?
Dollar forty-eight. Is it a dollar forty-eight?
No, forty-eight thousand.
That's pretty fast.
Well, all you have to do is.
Oh, of course, oh, you know, and you just move all your stuff over. I would have made, I would have made you work for that. Which is times one point. Two ninety-six on two hundred.
A year.
A year, a year.
And still, that would, would still be very low in the state comparatively for what people spend on education. So we have a billion dollars in property, one of the highest in the state.
You know, I finally realized why Wolfro, Wolfro's was a little bit lower, but their valuation is two billion. So you get it, there's more, I mean.
Their what, their tax?
No, their, our valuation is about one billion, their valuation is about two billion.
That's just the one house over on the lake.
It is, it's just the one, we all know. Their tax rates are a little bit higher, they're obviously.
But their, their, their school rate was very close to ours and I was thinking their schools are so, right, it's quite a school.
It's, but it's because they, right, right.
Ours is pretty good, but we're not Wolfro.
We have to move the bottom line of the budget, guys, please.
All right, oh, we did, didn't, oh, no, Sandy, go for it.
Did I stand my journal?
I move to approve ten million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, fifty-five, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, seventy-one dollars, due forwarded to the budget committee for our final provision.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, exactly. We have articles or something to do.
We're here, just looking for the, yeah, there's something in your pocket.
Page number three.
One oh seven.
Show off.
I can count.
I got my shoes, I'll do the right still.
Now I've lost these, let me see if I can find them. No, 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 I'm looking for what we're gonna, about what we did on two and a half. I'll find it. Actually, Marie's here. We actually made copies of the law, but we're going to have you explain, so thank you. Because I can't find the copies.
What's she supposed to? Oh, are we to the. Oh, is she supposed to come? Oh, 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 oh.
She decided not to after we spent a lot of money talking to the attorney.
Well, they're spinning it a lot in the other direction, right?
Yes.
Oh, we know, we did, we, I mean.
So as long as everybody has this, this was a memo that was presented to the board because one member had asked about it. It gave you the opportunity to put aside money and if you look at the last page of this, this was the tax rate, I can't, I think this was, this was seventeen, tax rate setting and there's a dollar amount that tells you what the net assessment is, two and a half percent was the evaluation. And in seventeen, if the school board, if the community have voted to approve to do so, they could, if you have money at the end of the year, that's how much you could put aside, you didn't have to return it, would be reserved to set, be set aside and not return to.
But don't we have to specify what we're going to use it for in the warrant article?
The warrant article, the sample of the warrant article on page two or three says it right there, to see if the school board will vote, the school district will vote to authorize indefinitely until rescinded the retention of a year-end unassigned general fund in the amount not to exceed in any fiscal year, fiscal year, two point five percent of the current fiscal year's net assessment in accordance with the RSA. Such fund balance retained can only be used to reduce the tax rate or for emergency expenditures and over expenditures under the RSA, which are approved by the Department of Education. So I'm going to, in lay terms is, if this money is set aside, if the community votes to do so, it cannot be used to supplement the appropriations, the budget. It has to be for specific purposes and you have to go through the budget, you have to go have a public hearing, you have to have the budget committee approve it and then you have to write, the superintendent has to ask the commissioner of education for approval to use that fund. In order to use the fund, you have to deplete all your other resources. So if you had trust funds, before you could tap into this, you'd have to go to your trust fund. So let's say you had a deficit and you had a shortfall in, in special ed. And you have, so you have a shortfall of two hundred thousand dollars in special ed, you have a trust fund, you have to deplete that first. So you have to deplete the trust fund of a hundred thousand dollars. So then you have to go to the, to the Department of Education for the additional hundred thousand dollars. So it's not like you could use that first and then go to the trust fund, there's a process. So perhaps, and I don't know if this was ever put on the, on the warrant article for Wakefield, ever.
Do you return it at the end of every year and reapply every year?
Yes, so this number changes. So once you adopt, once the community adopts it, so the first year is going to be the big amount, one hundred and eighty-seven, and let's say next year, but you have to have it in your fund balance at the end of the year. You don't have this to return at the end of the year, you can't put it away. So you have, so when you appropriate.
You have to have the whole thing. We're not going to have that at the end.
Well, I'm, this is what, I'm just giving you the, or you could take up to whatever you have left, but this is what you're entitled to.
You can pay up to two point five percent.
Right.
We can determine if we wanted to, a lesser amount if we wanted to.
Yes, yes, it comes to the school board every year to determine if you're going to take the full amount or not. So the first year is the big chunk and then the second year, if it goes from one eighty-seven goes to two hundred, you only book the difference.
Or if you didn't have one eighty-seven and you just had a hundred, you'd get another hundred to get to the max.
Yes.
Depending on every year, for your cushion.
But it has to be adopted from the community before you can even use it. So is, so is that something that the school board is interested in going forth in the, as a warrant article for the next year?
We have to decide that now, too?
Yep.
Only in the sense that we then have to work on language.
So it's not something that has to be.
And the language, you, we usually pass up by DRA or look for.
Well, this is the language that they used to.
For this one.
For this one.
But this whole list tonight, we would have to start putting language together. Sometimes DRA has samples that you can kind of borrow. And then, I don't know, Marie, if, because this is our first year, if you run those by DRA, we always did.
First we do it for legal and then.
Through legal and the DRA. And that has to be done so that the budget committee can see those items as well, because any cost item, they either, a supporter don't. So on every warrant article, there will be whether or not a supporter.
So the answer is kind of yes, we really can't wait too terribly long. A couple of, well, I'm looking at all these, all, obviously, this is all very familiar to us, because we've looked at it a million times. As far as the two and a half percent, I mean, last year we were so tight, we were going to have to go to the. The commissioner for, to use our fund balance, to use our fund balance, which we had some, which we will, that will not happen this year.
You're correct.
So we really are down to the wire. Can we approve a lesser amount than the one eighty-seven, does it have to be?
No, the warrant article stipulates use up to two point five percent, the assessment. Then at the end of the year, if you only have a hundred thousand, that's all you could put in, but you may decide you only want to keep fifty in there and return fifty to the community. It's the board's, it'd be the board's discretion on how much they want to retain.
It's in, since, if we get to do everything that really would be super, we still are, do not have a lot of fluff in this budget, even though it seems like it, we're catching up, we didn't have any, so this could start a small cushion. Like, say we do have fifty-seven thousand left over, like this year, you're saying we get to keep that as a cushion only for emergency use.
And after you deplete your trust funds?
Yeah, after we spend everything else, it could only be used for obvious emergency purposes, because I, I don't think we're asking for the full, for one eighty-seven. Just whatever happens to be, we get to retain it for an emergency going forward. I don't really think that that's necessarily asking for money exactly. That's saying, can we start a little bit of a cushion instead of constantly asking for more than we need? It's a nice way to go, I think it's easier on building a small, then you know what your cushion is all this, all the time and it isn't, you know, how much are you going to offset taxes by returning fifty thousand dollars?
Right, but, but you can't, you have to have this at the end of the year, you can't raise taxes for this.
Of course, I get that. It's all, like, this year, thirty thousand dollars would have gone into it.
Well, if you had a hundred and eighty-seven, you'd use thirty of it.
Thirty thousand dollars would have gone toward a cushion. So it's, you're not, we're not, we're clearly not asking for money, we're just asking for a cushion rather than over asking in the budget. And it's much smaller cushion than in years past.
What some, what some districts have done, what some districts have done.
No, that's what I meant, we didn't, what?
What some districts have done, because it has less restriction, is if you have the thirty thousand at the end of the year, less restriction and less hoops you have to go through, you put in the trust fund, because that's where you have to go first.
You know.
I'm just saying, that's, that's what some people have done.
Sure, no harm, no foul, this makes it look like you're asking for two hundred and fifty or one eighty-seven, which we are not. We're just saying, hey, can we build a little cushion up to a certain point over the course of several years, which seems, I think, very reasonable and.
It seems responsible, that seems reasonable, it seems like the responsible thing to do.
So do cities run under a different?
No, cities can do that also, it's up to, the council has to approve.
What they would do, I don't ever remember seeing this on any of the things.
Well, maybe when you were working there, this didn't come into effect, because this law is, is not that old.
Okay, because what they used to do is that, if they knew they were going to have money at the end of the year, they would take some of aside and spend it before June thirtieth and return what they didn't use back to the town.
Every district, every city could do whatever the, the local legislation.
What Marie was saying is you can, we're done, want any one of these articles to be funded at a surplus. And then they only get funded if you have money at the end. So is that a better way than to, in other words, you can specify a trust that it goes into and you don't lose it? Where the two point five you lose every year and have to reapply for it.
I don't trust that we're going to have enough left over to not fund the trust fund or the capital reserves.
What? Are you with me on that?
If we say the SAU budget can be filled with the surplus, that's how it gets filled. Doesn't get filled just by, by requesting it on a warrant article. I think that's a little risky, I'd rather risk my cushion than filling a capital reserve.
Well, it actually is a warrant article, it just says funded at a surplus. So it would go on the ballot, if people say yes, you get to keep that money, the two point five you don't get to keep.
I have yet to be on a budget that has a significant surplus.
Well, someday.
The ones, you know, last year's was red, black, red, black, red, black, you know, that was very stressful.
It was.
It was, and, and we were on a budget freeze, I mean, you know, that was from, from January through. So, anyway, I would rather not fund them through surplus if anybody, this, this year, if, if we can actually build a surplus, then sure. But I don't know that there will be one.
The first one is only through surplus, right?
Well, we're talking about the second bullet, hold back up to two point five percent of any surplus, okay? But we also have to talk about the first bullet, um, but it, they're separate, so you have to decide whether you want to put the two and a half.
So, the warrant article that you put on, so this warrant article for the two and a half percent assessment, the community could vote it in, and even though you don't have any surplus at the end of the year, that, that warrant article then becomes permanent, ongoing, so that you don't have to fund it ever.
Until they vote it out. Correct.
Right. So, you don't ever have to fund it, it's just that the, then the community has the opportunity to do that going forward, that it's a one, it's...
So, this isn't a warrant article that come, goes over here, this is a one-time deal?
One-time.
I, I think, I love it, I think it's very complicated to explain, so, I mean, I love it, I think it's no harm, no foul, it's, it, you don't raise taxes for it, it's just there if it's there, and, um, and you, but whatever, um...
So, will it go or won't it? Are you recommending it as a warrant article or not?
Yeah.
Yes, right?
I, I think, I would.
It's worth a try.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, do you need us to make a motion?
Yeah, uh, well, we could do them all at once, we can do them individually, it's totally up to you. Uh, actually, we just need direction. So, you want us to craft a warrant article? We'll bring them back to you on the fourth.
I don't understand why this says three-thirty.
So, these, uh, I don't know how, what that means either.
Because I add these two up.
Yeah, I don't understand.
And they're much lower than this number every year.
I agree with you, I have no idea what that means, scratch that out.
This, we're not asking, I mean, we're not asking for any money, we're just saying, hey, can we retain a surplus if there is one?
Scratch that out, I don't know where that came from.
Yes, that was pretty scary.
I'm sorry.
So, we're really on...
We do have to go back to the top one, and, um, the exercise that we did to come up with how close we are to our bottom line this year, uh, that was the fifty-seven thousand, I would recommend that we have this article, that it be worded up to, and we probably are safe with a two hundred thousand dollar, but that's your call as to how much. We can also go to the, um, expendable special ed trust, um, which has another maybe hundred thousand in it if we needed it, so we're kind of protected.
All right, first time I've actually lost it, so, what are we talking about?
We're talking about a deficit appropriation, meaning, that's okay, I've been, I've been wandering too sometimes, um, so, we have, we are recommending that we ask the voters to approve an additional appropriation to our bottom line budget, because I am fearful we will not wind up in the black. So, this is one way for us to say we would like a deficit appropriation for up to, in the highly unlikely, but possibly, probably, um, that we, uh, can't manage our expenses with our appropriation. If you don't do this, we have no way. If we are running the red, we have no way.
We have no, we have no cash.
We have no cash, so...
So, how's that in different from the second one?
This one is just, just, you get to hold anything that's extra. This one says, actually, we're gonna put this money right over here in case we wind up in a deficit. Last year, we were calling...
But that's something, this is something we have to do every year, right?
Well, hopefully not, hopefully we won't be anywhere close to this position again.
The second one is...
But, um, yes, you're correct. The second one is just, you know, you can hold up to two, which is a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, and it goes up every year.
Comfortable with the two hundred thousand?
Okay. Yeah, we'll knock that down a little bit, so, yes.
I think so, I think, um, we talked about this, if we could look at this again before it actually, the number is hardened fast, but at least we know we're going to craft language that would allow us to do that, and then the number can be changed if you want. Obviously, we don't own the teacher and parent contract yet, but there'll be warrant articles. Now, these are the expendable trusts per the CIP. So, anything you listed in year one was your priority for year one, so, these are from the CIP. Would you like all of those as the warrant articles?
Yeah.
They're, they're all, yes, okay. And then, what I also tried to do, the very last, was warrant articles to raise money for other expendable trusts that were not in the CIP, as, so, what is there, there's the special education, um, if, unfortunately, we have to use it this year, I'm suggesting let that get replenished.
That's for the catastrophic?
Yes, that's for emergency expenses. Technology...
It's not catastrophic aid, those are two different things.
I'm sorry, did I say that?
This is the money we have to have in case we have to send a child out.
Right, so, we, we had...
Sandy was saying she thought that number was low.
Three unanticipated, uh, disreplacements this past year, so we may have to go to the expendable trust.
So, that's the money we need to have upfront regardless of the state, and we hope that the state will reimburse us for some of it at the end, right?
The catastrophic aid is for, um, it's, I think last year it was anything above fifty-six thousand dollars that you pay for a student out of district.
Do you think that's enough money?
Sandy doesn't...
Do you think that's enough money?
The hundred thousand?
Is, I don't, I didn't...
Do you think the hundred thousand in the special education expendable trust is enough?
Well, there's a hundred now, right? There's a hundred now, right?
Yeah, but I, but I, you know...
Hundred and five.
It ju, it just takes two kids, and we're, we're above that money. So, you know, I really think that we need to up that, I've always thought it was a little low.
We didn't have a hundred, the none.
We haven't, I've been, between sixty-four and one oh one, I've been here six years, and we haven't touched the expendable trust, so...
This may be the first.
This would be the first, right.
Well, we definitely want to re, reload it, right? No question there, technology?
No reason for putting it down, or no reason for the number that I chose, it was just another trust.
Well, currently, in the trust fund, the tech, the regular, um, regular technology line is seventy-three hundred dollars in there. There's a trust fund for technology and there's seventy-three hundred dollars in there as of, as of October.
Seventy-three hundred, seven thousand, three hundred.
Yeah, I mean, anything could go, anything could break, you know, Wi-Fi or, it's not a, not something we can live without, so...
Well, you know, it's, you know, it's a good thing to, to start this, to continuously to replenish the technology trust fund, this would be a great place to have, to, um, to do the replacement.
Computers.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That would be a great option, that would be a great place to start tapping money in for.
And, and not have to have such a big hit like this year, that would be nice.
And the SAU one is down there because we will have depleted, uh, essentially, most of it, and the server for the backup, and therefore that would just replenish it.
No, we could have, we could have problems, we could have...
I think we're done.
Wow.
Thanks for...
So, we're saying yes to all these.
Because you've been coughing.
I don't blame you, no, maybe I can't be...
No, thank you for coming, right now.
I think the cold is gone, it's just that...
Um, my, I, he was said, I, he said, do you need me to pick you up, or should I just pick you up in the morning?
That's not bad, come on.
No, it wasn't, it was good, so, um, but he, I'd usually have my own car, but he didn't, it was so snowy out, but, um, you know, there is something I'd like to say. Not yet, just before we adjourn, I, it was a very, very difficult meeting last night, and, and I wish we had flip-flopped them, I wish we had gotten this meeting first, and we had the budget tonight, and it is very unfortunate, we were not at our best, but I know how hard, I know that the bu, I know that this school board has donated triple the amount of time that ever is asked of them. Anytime that was asked to have a meeting, we were here, everybody said yes, Bob would be here, he's stuck in the snowstorm in Massachusetts, and I know how hard the administration has worked, and I know that last night was not, not our best, but tonight was excellent, and I do know how hard everybody here has worked, and how much heart goes into improving this kids' education, I'm proud to be part of this board. Yay! A motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.